All right, we will now begin the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd, and we'll start with some announcements. Brief announcement, Friday, sorry, this Sunday, there will be a panel discussion on models for senior housing, which will offer information about different options, and it will be from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Holiday Inn on Beacon Street in Brookline. On Friday, the 12th of April, there will be a send-off. Here's the official Boston Marathon book. Team Brookline will have our send-off at 6:00 p.m. on Friday, April 12th, for all 25 Team Brookline Marathon runners. For information, and also if you want to donate to benefit the four participating organizations, Brookline, the Mental Health Center, the Brookline Teen Center, Brookline Education Foundation, and the Brookline Library Foundation, go to www.teambrookline.org. And I have one more announcement, and that is that on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. in Town Hall, Room 103, we will be honoring retiring Director of Human Relations Youth Resources Stephen Bressler, who will be leaving after 39 years of dedicated service to the town. Other announcements? Selectmen Goldstein.
Thank you, thank you. This Saturday, April 6th, is the 19th Annual Brookline Rotary Pancake Breakfast. This is a hugely popular event in town. I love it, and I know a lot of you do, too. This year, like in past years, it's $6 entry at the door for all-you-can-eat pancakes, and there'll be entertainment for the kids, and band, you'll have the Baker School Band and the Winnicott Brothers Orchestra, First Corps Army Cadet Band as well, magic tricks, clowns, balloon twirling, balloon twisting, and pancakes. What's different this year is real maple syrup. No more artificial maple syrup for Brookline. We're going for the real thing, and as usual, there'll be the continuous raffles, which I know are a big deal, too. I think all of, all of the Board of Selectmen will be there, and I'll be there, and we'll be, we'll be working. We're not, we're not just eating pancakes, we're doing important things like-
Tell them the hours.
Oh, I'm sorry. 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, but it tends to go even a little later.
I think if there's anybody in line, they get pancakes, right?
Yeah, I always get assigned to clearing these sticky trays. That seems to be my, my role, and a Selectmen Banka nabs the selling raffle tickets.
I sell, I sell raffle tickets, and anybody who sees me will get a bargain discount. I have a multiple-ticket discount.
Right. I actually do have one more announcement, which I'd like to make, about National Public Health Week, and the first annual Wellness in the Village will be held at Town Hall in Brookline, Saturday, April 6th, from 1:30 to 4:30 p.m., and I think this is very important because after you've filled yourself with pancakes, you probably need to go and have classes in yoga, and healthy eating, and bodywork.
Can I mention one more thing, too? I forgot the most important thing, in that it is for the benefit of the Brookline Food Pantry, and the Brookline Food Co-op, and other Brookline charities, too.
Absolutely.
Mostly, and fittingly, for a food-oriented event, for hunger, to end hunger in Brookline.
Right. Okay. Any other announcements from members of the board?
Couple of things.
And we will, sorry? Sorry, Selectmen Banka.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things happened this week. One, a lot of fun. I had the pleasure of meeting Wally the Green Monster for the Hubway Bike Share Kickoff. The Hubway bikes are out for the season, are out on the street for the season now, and as we learned, there's an additional station at JFK Crossing, so they should be up and operating now. And in addition, today, I met with the Norfolk County Commissioners about one of the budget issues related to Norfolk County, and that's the issue of OPEB liabilities, the post-retirement health benefits for Norfolk County employees, and the fact that with respect to, in particular, employees of the Norfolk Aggie School, the communities of Norfolk County are assuming and accruing liability as time goes on for, for those liabilities for employees, and some of those costs, I believe, should be shared by the non-Norfolk County communities that are benefiting from the school. There was general agreement, I think, about the issue and the existence of the problem. I think I could say that there was not a meeting of the minds about the solution to it, so that is a discussion to be continued, and I'll, I think we'll be appearing before the Advisory Board of Norfolk County on the issue going from there.
Okay. That all of our announcements, then let's move to public comment. We have four people signed up tonight, and I just want to remind everybody about the public comment guidelines. You have up to three minutes to speak, and the board does not respond. Who is coming first? Which, which person wishes to come first? There are four of you signed up. Whichever, you choose your order. Come forward, you've got the mic. Just identify yourself for our recorder, please.
Mariela Ames, Town Meeting Member, Present 15. I am a Town Meeting Member, as you know, and I am a member of the Human Relations Commission. We are charged with addressing race relations and issues of discrimination in the town, among other things. There are at least four open spots on the commission, which by law should have 15 members. The commission now has only two minority members, one black woman and one Latina present here. You are the body responsible for appointing members to the commission. Mr. Brian Huckletner was the last commissioner appointed. He was interviewed on January 15, and a week later, on January 22nd, he was appointed, member of the commission. Mr. Huckletner is a white man, he's a lawyer, whom I had not seen once at commission's meetings before he came, he became an appointed member. Mr. Cruz Sanabria was interviewed by you on March 12th, and he's still waiting to be appointed. Mr. Sanabria is an ideal commissioner, he is Hispanic, he has attended numerous commission meetings, he is a schoolteacher in Boston, he's a disabled combat-related veteran, Chair of a Veterans Committee, a parent of a high school student in Brookline, and especially a strong advocate for improving race relations. Most of the town boards and commissions lack diversity in their membership. You are validating the problem that minority residents, and specifically applicants and employees, have with the town. We are thought of and treated differently than our white counterparts, regardless of our qualifications. Here, we are sadly having to spell out the fact that a highly qualified minority applicant is being put on hold to a commission task specifically to deal with race relations and discrimination. I know you don't, you don't respond, so please answer to yourselves, what message are you sending about equal opportunity and diversity? Thank you.
Other people who want to have public comment? Yes, come forward.
Hi, I'm Larryoni, and been a taxpayer since '78 in the town, and lived in the town since '74, and currently serve as a commissioner on the Human Relations Commission. And last night, we had a very interesting meeting that was facilitated by Mr. Sandman, and he raised, well, there were three key issues. One is this idea that at least some people in town value consistency, some people value uniformity, okay? And then the other words floating around were, "We don't want to have a one-person It got me thinking, because if we look at, we have, and why I'm here tonight specifically is, there are at least four vacancies on the commission. And I started thinking about this serving while white in Brookline, and I'm a white male, but when, and I'm not a guy who's into political correctness, and I'm not a guy into photo diversity, but the reality is this, that, you know, the friendly reporter who calls up and wants to take pictures of the members of the Board of Human Resource Development, the Selectmen, these commissions, it's, it's, it's pretty consistent, the picture, and there's uniformity. So I hope that you all will take advantage of this opportunity with these four vacancies to appoint some people that really have competency and skill. And one last point. Michael last night helped me to understand the Brooklinees. Well, there's a Board, and there's a commission, and there is this deep cultural assumption that people on Boards, they have professional, they're professionals, and they have expertise. But people who are on commissions, they just have an interest, or, you know, they got a good heart. The reality is that right now, on the Human Relations Commission, there's tremendous expertise, professional expertise, although it is a little bizarre that the last appointment that happened in one week was a person whose expertise is in commercial real estate. So I hope that there's a tremendous opportunity here to appoint four really competent, professional people who have, you know, have a really strong interest. So, you know, that's what brings me here tonight. The other thing I do want to say is that there is something in the culture about lawyering up around here, and I want to just say this, that one of the benefits of having that Human Relations Commission is that we could be in the prevention business. I, as a commissioner, was approached at least two, three times about some events that later cost the town about $250,000, okay? And if it had been allowed for a couple of those commissioners to do prevention work, I'd bet the ranch that the town would have saved a lot of money. So I, you know, the spirit of what I'm saying is, is you have a tremendous opportunity here, and people, everybody is looking for your leadership on this, okay? Because at the end of the day, the policy is set at the top, and there is a feeling that, that when there's delay, that it, all it does is agitate people. So thank you very much.
Okay, I have two more people signed up. Is there anyone else here who wants to speak in public comment? No? Okay, then we will move on. Minutes are not ready, so we will not take up the minutes from March 27th, and that makes the next item, the reprogramming of home funds. Ms. Price, and colleagues, friends, relations.
Good evening, I'm Fran Price, Housing Development Manager in the Planning Department, and I'm here to ask you for a vote on a substantial change to our one-year action, past one-year action plans for the home program and a reprogramming of money to the 86 Dummer Street Project. As you remember, a couple of years ago, the Board of Selectmen committed up to $1.7 million to the, to the Dummer Street Project, conditional on all the pieces coming together, and we're very close to it now. And as always with those kinds of commitments, the commitment is based on the availability of Housing Trust money, but we always try to substitute our federal sources to the extent that we can. Joe Viola was up here a couple of weeks ago, getting a final approval on $600,000 in CDBG money, which we've been holding for this project, and now we're ready to, to ask you to reprogram, soon to be committed, the, the funds that we have available from the home program. And just to go over this, every year, we do a one-year action plan, and that, a one-year action plan is voted on, or is accepted through a public hearing process that includes the whole consortium. Any change that one-year action plan comes back to a public hearing, any substantial change, which this is. So we are asking that the full amount of money that we put into a general fund in fiscal years 12 and 13, to the Affordable Housing Development Fund, be reprogrammed to the 86 Dummer Street Project. We also have some money in the Home Buyer Assistance Program lines, which are actually payoffs of older loans that were put back in the Home Buyer Assistance Program, which is the HAB's policy, to make available only when there isn't a larger housing development, which can better leverage the town money, as there is now. So putting together the four sources that you see listed here, we're asking for a total of $828,704.24, Newton is very precise, to, to be reprogrammed for 86 Dummer Street. And I'll let Patrick Dober give you an update on the project. We're very excited about its progress to date.
Yes, please, Mr. Dober.
And, yeah, thank you. The town's commitment, the Selectmen, and Fran, the Planning Department, is the key ingredient to making the Dummer Street Project move toward being a reality. As folks may know, it'll be the largest new construction of affordable housing in Brookline in over 30 years. A very quick project update, these projects do move slowly, but the pace is accelerating now. We're making good progress toward closing in the coming year. In fact, next week, we're going out with advertising for pre-qualification for construction managers, so that's the first step in the public procurement of a construction team. At the same time, we're going through that very difficult process that you're probably very familiar with, the finalizing the details of the construction plan so that we, A, build a high-quality project that's consistent with the designs approved by the town, and B, at the same time, build the project within the budgetary constraints that we have. It's a very challenging process, but we're making good progress toward that goal. In terms of other funding commitments, the state is the, providing the majority of the funds for the projects. We'll be receiving both subordinate debt funds, as well as tax credits for the project. From the state, we have commitment letters for the subordinate debt funds. On the tax credits, the state has made a public announcement that Dummer will receive tax credits, so it's, um, good news, and going forward toward a closing.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Dober or Ms. Price while we've got them? No? Selectmen Banka.
Yeah, just actually a comment. All of the Selectmen were a little bit late today. I don't know whether this announcement was made, but, because I was a little late getting in, but we were all at Steps to Success fundraiser this evening, and I saw David Treach.
Got my blekey.
And there, one of the topics of conversation was the Dummer Street Project, which really is one of the more exciting affordable housing efforts this town has undertaken, certainly in, in recent memory, and if not, if not in its history, given the particular climate that we're facing right now. So congratulations, and thank you. And Fran, you've really had a significant hand in this, and you should be very proud of where it's going.
And I would just like to add that Steps to Success is a partnership between the town, among the town and the Housing Authority, and the School Department, and we are very proud of that partnership, and very pleased to be associated, working together. It's a great program, and it's a great partnership.
That's right. Thank you on both fronts, and I'm, as the Housing Authority's Executive Director, I serve on the Steps Board, and I'm the Chairman of their Finance Committee as well, so.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Great. I am fully supportive of the, the project, and, and happy that progress is being made. A quick question for Fran, though. Does the, the loss of these funds from the Affordable Housing, the general fund, affect operations, other, other programs in the Affordable Housing Department in any way? Is there-
I think we're all concerned with the, the ongoing reduction in the federal funds, but we hear that for, I think, I think what happened in Washington was, with home, was that so much was cut last year, we had a 40% cut, I believe, nationwide, so much was cut last year, that if they put the same hatchet this year, they would just have to eliminate the program. So I, so we're expecting for a fiscal '14, only a 5% cut from this year, but it's very little, and it's harder to use. We're very lucky to be able to put together over $800,000, which is what we've done. We put in home money, we put 1.2 million into, of home money, into Olmsted Hill. We put $1.8 million in home money into, into St. Aden's. We put $900,000 into the lodging house at 1754 Beacon, but the only reason we were able to do that was because we could aggregate years. We can no longer do that, and so it's going to be harder to spend the little money that we get. So all of our housing programs are going to be a lot more difficult, because the sums are small, and it's harder to carry them multi-year.
Selectmen Daly?
Yeah.
Sorry. Did you have more? Finished?
No. I'm just, I'm going to ask Mr. Dober about the criteria for who gets to live there. We've been hearing from, about some of our veterans coming home with serious problems and injuries and things. Are they, are they a priority for that housing, or who?
It's still to be determined. Generally speaking, the housing is set aside for people below 60% of area median, and then there'll be some tiers even lower than that, 30 and 40% of area median. We have yet to establish other priorities. For the most part, it'll be by lottery. The Housing Authority currently, in our public housing developments, does have preferences for Brookline residents, for people that are in extreme homeless conditions, fleeing domestic violence, those sorts of things. So we haven't put together the final preferences yet, but we're certainly open to suggestions.
Well, let me put in my, my suggestion for the, for the veterans.
And I just wanted to add to that, that Brookline has been able to work with the HCD to achieve a 70% preference in all our recent projects, which includes town residents, employees of the town and the Housing Authority, and members of families that have children in the Metcalf system. So those three constitute our, our 70% priority. Often, in, in some cases, in the homeownership program, we actually have more than 70% in the end who have, who are from Brookline, or have some priority, but only because they have such a large number apply.
Thank you. While you are here, because I misread something and skipped, and I know Frank Caro is here, would you like to give us a little more detail about the Senior Housing Forum that's going to be held next Sunday, this coming Sunday, the 7th?
Sure. We're very excited about this. We are bringing together experts in the fields of assisted living, street housing, senior housing development, long-term care communities, and really exploring what, what the future opportunities are. We know that there's a 40% jump in, in the peer group in Brookline of people 55 to 65. It's pretty consistent with national trends of the baby boom. People talk about 80 million people, and Fran could talk much better about this, getting, you know, really aging out in the next 20 to 30 years, and real challenges nationally and statewide and locally, in terms of what kinds of combinations of housing and services people need. So this is a great opportunity, just to become familiar with, with all of these different housing models, but, but more so to explore what could fit in Brookline. You know, what are the, what are the, both the, the attractions of Brookline to developers of these really unique types of housing, and what are the challenges of developing here, so that there might be some kind of partnerships in, in the future.
Okay, and my, my reference to Mr. Caro is that I gather he will be participating in the forum, right?
Sure.
Okay. We ready to take a vote? No, we're not. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition of the transfers that are being proposed? Seeing and hearing none? I move that we vote to make a substantial change to the fiscal year 2010, 2012, and 2013, one-year action plans by adding this 86 Dummer Street Project, that's Part 1. And Part 2, I move that we reprogram a total of $828,704.24 to the 86 Dummer Street Project from the sources I will name. $143,429.95 from fiscal year 2010, Home Buyer Assistance Program. $397,423.50 from fiscal 2012 Affordable Housing Development Pool. $224,874 from fiscal year 2013 Affordable Housing Development Pool, and $62,976.79 from fiscal year 2013 Home Buyer Assistance Program. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Banka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair of votes, aye. Thank you, and we look forward to progress reports. And now, I apologize, Mr. Caro, we definitely want to appoint the Age Friendly Cities Committee. Would you like to identify who you are? Who they are?
Yes, I'm Frank Caro, and I'm associated with the Age Friendly Cities Initiative. I'm Nancy Daly, Ruth Ann, Nancy Daly-
The select person, right?
Daly, who is present, Ruth Ann Dobek, who is the Director of the Council on Aging, and I, and I have co-chaired a, an ad hoc committee that explored the development of the Age Friendly Cities program, and-
And succeeded in being approved.
And we have been designated for, for that purpose, and, and a week ago, we had a very nice photo opportunity. We have a beautiful photo of, of that, of this group, you know, standing admiring this nice certificate that we've received, and, and so now we want to take another step. We, we want to have the committee that is overseeing this initiative designated as a Selectmen's Committee. That designation will be helpful to us, because it will solidify the committee that is overseeing this initiative, and it will, it will confirm the reality that it, that it makes sense for this committee, as the work goes forward, to communicate on a periodic basis with the Board of Selectmen about our progress in pursuing that initiative.
Great, thank you. Selectmen Daly, you have-
Yeah, and I, and I just want to add, I know I mentioned it last week, but I want to keep saying it so people remember. On May 2nd, we're having a wonderful Senior Health Fair that we're, our committee is working on, together with the people at Hebrew Senior Life, and it's going to be at the Senior Center on May 2nd, a Thursday, 10, 10 o'clock in the morning, I think it is? 10 to 2, or something like that.
Well, we have time to give people update.
I will, yes, I'll get, I'll get better on the numbers, but, but anyway, I, I think that, that was one of the things we talked about in this committee, and I'm thrilled that we're, we're able to get that off the ground, and the, the forum you just mentioned on housing for seniors was another thing that-
Well, absolutely.
Frank kind of kicked off as a result of, you know, our work on this committee, so I feel like we're having some effect already.
Right, and I, you know, should say that the, that the forum is exactly the kind of collaboration that we have in mind, where the, the, our agenda in assuring that Brookline is an age-friendly city has been taken on by the Department of Planning and Community Development as part of its perspective, and Fran Price is, you know, as part of her work as, as an employee for the, for the town, has put in an enormous amount- as, as an employee for the, for the town, has put in an enormous amount of effort in putting together this terrific program that we're going to have on Sunday.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion, Selectmen Daly?
Yeah, have, have we previously voted this charge or not?
No, I think we should vote the charge as well as the members.
So I'll move favorable action on the charge, and the members, myself, Mr. Caro, Ruth Ann Dobek, Alberta Lipson, Lloyd Gellino, Sherry Gerschenfeld, Selma Bengis, Judy Allen, Roberta Winitzer, and Matthew Weiss, who's here with us tonight.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Caro.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing more.
We will.
I know we will. Okay, next item is a Public Works Personnel, Commissioner Peppa Sturgeon.
Good evening, members of the board. This item is to fill a vacancy for a motor equipment repair person in the Highway Division. It was created due to a resignation from one of our current mechanics. He didn't resign because he didn't like the job, he resigned because he took a, a better-paying job closer to home, so.
Cool.
That's always a good thing for them, not so good for us when we have to fill them. So we only have five mechanics in the Highway Division. As you can imagine, with one of them vacant, there is an urgent need to fill that as soon as possible, given the workload of the Fleet Services Division. So we ask your permission, your approval, to fill this vacancy.
Any questions from members of the board?
No.
All right, I move that we approve filling a vacancy in the position of Motor Equipment Repair Person, Grade L N six, in the Public Works Highway Division. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly?
Aye.
Selectmen Benka?
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You might as well stay there, Commissioner, because the next thing we're gonna do is hear about your financial, well, your budget, but we'll talk about the financial plan. So you have the floor for your introductory information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are here before you to prevent the, present the FY fourteen, fiscal fourteen budget for the Department of Public Works. I will tell you that the Department of Public Works has a forty million dollar budget, and the town administrator has asked me to try to zip through it as quickly as I can, so I'm only gonna spend about.
Well, you, you, it only takes what, about two seconds per million, something like that?
Well, no, I'm gonna spend about two minutes per million, so in about an hour and a half, we ought to be through this, and I know you'll all be happy about that, so.
Well, we can save time by cutting the budget.
Yeah, right, we could, we could shorten your.
Yes, you can. I don't think you want to know the consequences of that, though. So anyway, I'm gonna talk about the budget in two parts, just as I do every year. The first part is the, is the, what's called the DPW budget, which is all of the divisions exclusive of the Water and Sewer Enterprise. I'll save my remarks about that to the end, and those should be fairly brief. The total DPW budget for FY fourteen is thirteen million eight hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That is a two-point-one percent increase over FY thirteen, or about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The budget, just to give you a feel for the budget where the money is spent, personnel makes up fifty-three percent of the budget at seven-point-three million. Contractual services is twenty-five percent of the budget at about three-point-four million. Supplies, seven percent of the budget, or about nine hundred thousand dollars. Utilities is about ten percent of our budget, and that's one-point-four million dollars. And that, of course, includes gasoline and diesel fuel. And capital equipment, the infamous seven hundred thousand, represents five percent of the total Public Works budget. And once again, that is exclusive of the Water and Sewer Enterprise budget. The, the budget is broken into five major divisions. The administrative division, which does most of the business work of the department, engineering and transportation, the highway and sanitation divisions, which sometimes are viewed as two separate divisions, but in actuality, they are one, and that, of course, includes fleet services, and the parks and open space division. You're all very familiar with what the Public Works Department does, so I'm not gonna get into that in very much detail. I am gonna talk about some of the major changes going forward in the FY fourteen budget. The first few changes have to do with personnel. This year, this year, we are funding the remainder of the point-five FTE position that was created in the Transportation Division for the Transportation Administrative Assistant. That position was funded half a year through FY thirteen, and the remainder of the position will be funded in FY fourteen, giving us the complete one FTE going forward. I am happy to report to you that we have now filled that position. It was an internal transfer from another department. The candidate, we're very happy with the candidate who's selected, and she's up and running this week, and, and we're moving forward with that. As you know, that, that position was created to take some of the workload for the new Taxi Medallion program. The second personnel change is an upgrade in the Highway Division. We're upgrading one of our working foreman positions to a higher-grade level of construction supervisor. This was designed to augment our sidewalk replacement program and allow a higher level of skill in terms of supervision on multiple crews as we ramp up our sidewalk replacement for, program in FY fourteen. We've upgraded also in the Parks and Open Space Division, one of our craftsman positions, to create a new zone manager position. This position will be used to oversee the work in the Emerald Necklace and the Muddy River area. Right now, we have some contractual services that are dedicated to overseeing that work, including supervision of some of the corrections crews that are, that are working down there. What we're, our intention in doing this is to pull back some of the private services from our Landscape Services budget, pulling that back in-house and upgrading this position to give us a little bit more control over the oversight of the work in that area. We've also requested an upgrade of a second park maintenance craftsman in the Parks and Open Space Division to a position called Forestry Zone Manager. In FY thirteen, we did outline some changes to the forestry sub-program to give us better efficiencies in our tree pruning program, but we found it very difficult to fill the position of craftsmen, forestry craftsmen. There's just not a lot of candidates there that are willing to come here and work for the level of pay that we were offered. It's a very highly skilled position. We did have two gentlemen that came and took the job and didn't stay very long, and the position was once again, was once again vacant. We've just recently filled it again for the third time, but what we've asked or recommended going forward in FY fourteen is to restore the funding to bring this position back to a zone manager grade, which is about a six thousand dollar increase in salary to allow us to attract a higher level skill of candidates. The total, the total changes to the personnel budget of all four of those positions amount to thirty-nine thousand dollars, and keeping in mind that of the thirty-nine thousand, six thousand of that is actually being funded through a reduction in the contractual services budget for Landscape Services.
And, and the number of personnel is constant?
The number of personnel is constant, with the exception of the half FTE increase for the Transportation Administrative Assistant, yes. Yes. Just some highlights of some major changes in the remainder of the budget. In the service budget, there's a thirty-three thousand dollar increase for, for digital IPS parking meter services. Right now, we have fifty-five multi-space meters that we pay fifty dollars a month for, for data management. We have four hundred and five IPS meters that we pay ten dollars and ninety-five cents a month for cellular and software licenses, so those two items amounted to an increase in the budget of about thirty-three thousand dollars. We've increased the solid waste disposal budget by forty thousand dollars. We've had a tremendous loss in the paper market during FY thirteen, actually the tail end of FY twelve and FY thirteen. Our contract with, with Waste Management for Recycling Services has a clause in it relative to, to recovery of the paper market, number six paper. When the market is good, we make money back to the town, and when the market is not good, it costs us a little bit more money each and every month. Well, this year, the market has not been good, and we're anticipating an increase in the cost of about forty thousand dollars to cover both that and the diesel fuel clause in the contract as well. If diesel fuel, if the price of retail diesel fuel goes out of a certain range, if it goes above that range, then we have to pay the contractor additional monies. If it falls below that range, we get a credit, so hopefully the price of diesel fuel is gonna come back down shortly. Credit card services is increased by nineteen thousand dollars. Part of that was a four thousand dollar transfer from IT of the refuse fee, a credit card service associated with the refuse fee, and the remainder was for, for parking meter credit card due to, fees due to the increased usage of credit cards for parking meter payments. Forty thousand dollar increase in the transportation budget to cover the professional technical services for our Taxi Medallion consultant. This is a one-time bump up for FY fourteen only, and that will not be carried through into FY fifteen. There are some small increases in the supply accounts, some of them to offset, or to help augment the ramp up of the parking meter program, about thirteen thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollar increase in custodial supplies, so that we can properly maintain the comfort stations in some of our park areas in town. Some minor increases to the snow and ice budget to cover our sand and salt, and some, a twenty-eight thousand dollar increase in the motor vehicle supply budget. This budget has been level funded for many years, and the, and due to inflation, the price of purchasing repair parts for, for motor vehicles has gone through the roof, so we're hoping to recoup some of those costs. Just a note on supplies, the supply budget was decreased by thirty thousand dollars due to the, the final year of the TOTA purchase for single-stream recycling. The final year of the lease was reduced by thirty thousand dollars through the, through the vendor, and that was used to offset the, some of the increases to the supply budget. Just a couple of accomplishments in, in the Public Works side of the business that I'd like to highlight for FY thirteen. The department did participate in a performance measurement initiative that was encouraged by the town administrator. This was hosted by the UMass Collin Center. We actively participated in many sessions on performance measurement, performance management, and even participated in what we call StatNet meetings that were statewide, where, I don't know if you're familiar with CompStat programs, where, where police departments sit down with senior managers and go through their data and, and critique their own operations. We have a similar program that we used in Public Works on a statewide program where we actually participated in a similar exercise, and then held one of our own in town here that I thought was very successful. We did implement the recommendations of the Parking Meter Task Force, which, as you know, was responsible for the removal of the multi-space meters at Curbside in certain areas of town, and the restoration of single-space parking meters that are both digital and accept credit card payments. Those meters are all up and running now. They are in use, they're programmed, we think, properly. They seem to be working properly. We haven't had any complaints, oh, I knock on wood, and they seem to be, be well-accepted so far in the community.
And I, I just want to interject that I have a photograph of one of those multi-station devices with a little awning, which I'm going to give to the town administrator and share with you as a future possibility. One complaint we have heard about them is people don't like to have to stand in the rain.
We'll be happy to look at it. And as I said, all those new IPS meters are now up and running. We are in the process of implementing the second part of that task force recommendation, which is converting the parking lot meters where the single, the multi-space meters continue to exist. We're gonna convert those from pay and display, is, which is what we had in the street before, to pay by space, meaning the, the parking spaces will each have a designated number, and you go to the multi-space meter, and you actually punch in the space number where you're at, you pay your fee, and you don't have to walk back and put a ticket on the car, you can go about your business. So that conversion is in process now, and with that also is the addition of some, of more multi-space meters in the parking lots to try to expedite the queuing at each meter, so.
I just have a quick question about that. Are the, are the, is the number of your space gonna be like painted on the ground? Because.
No.
During the snow, you wouldn't be able to see it, so.
No, we're putting the poles, we're putting the parking meter poles back in that were there originally where the meters were, and on those poles, they'll be capped, and there'll be a sign that has the space number mounted on the pole. You can't put it on the ground in this part of the country, because as you say.
Right.
In the wintertime.
So do we still have those old poles?
Yes.
Or we're not gonna have to spend a lot of money on?
No.
Okay, great.
No, actually, the poles are being reinstalled as we speak. We do have the new signs ready to go, and we're just getting, getting everything set up so that once we roll it out, we can roll it out in unison.
Selectmen Benka?
As, as long as we're talking about parking meters, we had, there was a statement circulating that the single-head meters wouldn't take credit cards to add time. Was that just, and we're not gonna name the person, was that just the woman's credit card, or?
Yes, we have extensively tested them. The complaint was that if there was time left on a meter.
Yes.
And you went to the meter and tried to put additional time on with your credit card, that it wouldn't accept it, except for additional time, that you would have to use coin.
Yes.
That's not true.
Okay.
You can go to a meter that has existing time on it, and if it has fifteen minutes on it, and you want to add another hour to it, you can do that with your credit card. Yes.
I, I just want to add, this pay by space was something that I first saw in Ann Arbor, Michigan, when we were visiting our daughter out there, and it is, really, it's terrific for a couple of reasons. Number one, you don't have to go back and put the slip in your car, and number two, it makes it very easy for enforcement.
Yes.
Because there's a record of which spaces are paid for, and the traffic or the parking control officer can just walk down the street and it'll, or down the lot, and it'll identify which spaces have time on them and which don't.
Is this, are we gonna be able to use our phone to, if we're in the restaurant and we?
Actually, you can, you can do that.
Can we add time to our meter?
You can do that in Ann Arbor. I don't know that it's.
The technology's there, but we're not doing it for, with it yet.
And, you know, that, that actually, I think, is an issue, to the extent that one of the reasons for on-street meters is to encourage turnover to some extent. You really don't want somebody necessarily parking there for four, or five, or six hours as opposed to having turnover in that location for customers. So I, I think it's, there are pros and cons to allowing that.
So just before I continue, I do want to introduce my directors. All my directors are here. Kevin Johnson from Highway Sanitation and Fleet Services, Phil Crainer, Water and Sewer, Peter Ditto from Engineering and Transportation, we have Erin Wayback there, from Parks and Open Space. So all my directors are here, and at the conclusion of the, of the presentation of the budget, they're certainly here to answer any questions that you may have that I can't answer. So, one thing I do, one accomplishment that I do want to talk about a little bit because it leads directly into one of my prime objectives for FY fourteen, we did do a LED streetlight pilot program in some of the areas of town this year, most notably the Coolidge Park neighborhood area, the Riverway area, and prior to that, we had done the original pilot program up on the Allendale Hackensack Rizley Road, Paceon Road area. We found this pilot to be a, a great success. People seemed to like the new LED lighting. It certainly has its advantages in terms of lower energy costs. So because of that success, I have recommended in my FY fourteen budget going forward, after discussions with the town administrator, a program to convert all of the town streetlights to LED. to LED over the next four years, beginning in FY fourteen. We have about thirty-six hundred streetlights in town that we own. What we're planning on doing is converting about nine hundred of them every year with our in-house personnel in the Highway Division to LED streetlights. Given the payback, we estimate a payback period of about ten years on this particular program as it's funded now. However, that ten-year payback does not take into consideration rebates that would be available from N-Star for LED replacement. We have been in talks with N-Star now in terms of potential credit rebates or energy rebates per fixture. It is conceivable that when we apply the rebates, we can't, we can't apply for the rebates until we actually do the installation, but as we do them, we will certainly apply for the rebates. It's possible that we can shorten the ten-year payback down to somewhere between five and seven years. And I will tell you that the, the reduction in utility costs, once the payback period has been reached, is about a quarter of a million dollars per year in reduced energy costs for the town, and that's for every year going forward at current rates. So this program has some substantial benefits to it going forward, long-term for the town. I think we'll end up with a much better street lighting program. I think we'll end up with a, a program that requires much less maintenance from our own people in terms of bulb replacements. And I will tell you, just to give you a little bit of an indicator as to what the future holds for this, the lights that we're looking at have what they call smart technology, meaning that they self-meet themselves, they're Wi-Fi connected. We can program them to dim say from hundred percent to eighty percent late at night. And then if you happen to be walking your dog at two in the morning and you're going by the light, it'll send your presence and power back up so that you can pass safely. It will also send us emails and tell us when it needs to be repaired, if there are lights out, or if it's not working in general. So, I mean, this is the future, and this is, this is what it holds in terms of streetlight technology. Very simple infrastructure, yet easily managed going forward in the future. So we're kind of anxious and excited about rolling this program out. We will be going out with RFPs later on this year to select what we think is the best fixture going forward, and there'll be more to come on this.
Slakman-Benka?
Yeah, are, are any of the LED fixtures in place now?
Yes.
Where are they?
We have fixtures along Allendale Road, Hackensack. Rizley and Payson. We have them along the Riverway. We had, and we also have them in the Coolidge Park neighborhood, which is Columbia, Kenwood, up in that area. So I, I encourage folks to take a ride out at night and just look at them. They give you a more direct light. It's a brighter light, but it's more direct and you get less bounce back into the atmosphere.
Oh, great.
I'm sorry, Kevin?
Zero bounce back to the atmosphere. It's all directed downwards.
Are the ones that are in place now, the smart?
No.
Technology?
The ones, the ones that we had purchased on the pilot are just, just LED replacements. They're not, they're not interconnected, they're not Wi-Fi connected. But the technologies have evolved so fast over the last year or so that, that we're now looking into that as an alternate going forward.
We, I, I just sort of a lesson learned from the parking meter experience. When you got to the single head parking meters, you did try a couple of vendors, as I recall, on the, on the street, in the field, for a period of time before we settled on a vendor. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And I'm wondering whether it makes sense to do that in this situation if there are competing LED suppliers?
Yeah, LED fixtures are basically all very similar in terms of the diodes, the light emitting diodes and the drivers and all that. They're all pretty much similar. Where the differences lie are in the housings, you know, the cast aluminum housings and.
But I, I mean, I would, I would expect that the smart technology and the communications to the DPW offices might be some proprietary technology that each one has and uses. And I'm wondering whether it would make sense to at least do a test before we go forward with choosing a particular vendor.
Yeah, we certainly would do that. I mean, we're in the very preliminary discovery stages right now.
Okay.
But, you know, once we get serious with this, we will invite vendors, you know, once the RFP is out, to come in and actually demo their products. And, you know, we'll put it to the paces at that point.
Good.
I, I have a, just a question about color. In my neighborhood, there are sort of pinkish color and bluish color. What color will these be?
These are pretty like a bluish white. Yeah, yeah. The, the pink or the yellowish orange.
Yeah, there's a yellowish one too.
Those are the high-pressure sodiums.
Right.
Those are going to go away. Those, those bulbs, I should tell you, are anywhere from two to four hundred watts each, those bulbs. You know, they're very high wattage. A comparable LED fixture is about fifty-five watts. So there's a huge difference.
Sure. Well, carry on. We look forward to getting those savings.
Just a couple of other things that I want to talk about before I move on to Water and Sewer. You approved at least part of the Emerald Necklace Crossing project last week, and we're, we're ready to move forward on that particular piece at some point. We are wrapping up the construction of Billy Ward Playground, and I believe Clark Playground is, is finished, except for perhaps punch-lost items. So we're moving forward. I still intend to come back before you sometime this summer and present to you our crosswalk report that I promised you some time ago in terms of what we anticipate doing with, with sensitive crosswalks areas in town in terms of alternate designs. We'll be coming back this summer with that. And we are also going to move forward and complete the transition of the, the whole taxi cab licensing into medallions, all of that. As you can imagine, that's going to be a huge effort on the, on the part of the department to get that forward, that, that completed. If there are some, any questions on the public works side, we could talk about those now, and if not, I'll move into Water and Sewer and.
I see, hands up. Slakman-Daly?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions. So I, I noticed that, I guess this is Peter's part, that you finished looking at the no-turn-on-red restrictions? You have to come over there.
If you, you have to, sorry, you have to climb out of there and come to the microphone, otherwise you cannot be heard by the larger world.
I think it was two town meetings ago that we were required to look at all the traffic signal intersections, determine whether right-on-red was warranted or not.
Because I, I felt sure, I come out almost every day on Sumner to, to Boilston Route Nine, and that intersection is wide open. I mean, you can see if there are people crossing or anything like that. And it seems like one where you should be able to go right after you stop. So I felt sure when you evaluated it, you were going to come to that same conclusion, but.
That was at Sumner Route Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, that wouldn't be us, that'd be Mass Dye.
Well, it's on Sumner, though.
Yeah, but still they're, driving onto their, their highway, their, their right-of-way.
Oh, so they're the ones that say you can't turn right on red?
So I don't, I'm not sure, I'll check, but I don't think we analyzed that one.
Oh, okay.
But we completed all the ones that are town-owned.
Okay, great. Well, the other thing is, I, I continue to hear from people around town, you know, concerns about traffic calming, wanting traffic calming in their neighborhood and so forth. And there seems to be, I, I'm wondering with this assistant, is that assistant just going to be on the taxi medallions? Because there, there seems to be a general sense that it's hard to get through to anybody to talk about issues connected with neighborhood traffic things.
Yeah, those duties will be expanded beyond just the medallions. She'll be doing office management and answering the phones and getting the calls to the right people to handle them. So I would expect that would hopefully disappear shortly.
Okay, great.
Slakman-Golstein?
Thank you. Andy, I want to talk a little bit about sanitation and about our solid waste disposal contract, which if I remember correctly is going to be up for rebid at the end of this fiscal year 2014. And I just wonder if you can tell us what to expect in terms of that process over fiscal year 2014, and any thoughts you have on that, on that subject?
The, the current, sanitation is broken out into two distinct pieces, or actually three distinct pieces. The first piece is, is curbside collection, which, as you know, is, is done by in-house forces. The disposal and the hall and disposal of municipal solid waste, which is contracted out currently to Whitney Trucking. That contract will expire in June of 2014. So at the end of fiscal 14, that contract will expire. And of course, we have our single stream recycling contract with Waste Management. And I believe we are in year three of a five-year contract with Waste Management for the collection and processing of recycling materials. So the most immediate need, of course, is the, is the looming end to the disposal contract in 2014. And what we are planning on doing, there are a lot of moving pieces to, to the sanitation disposal contract. And we're going to be trying to take advantage of all of those moving pieces at once. It's going to be a Herculean effort, I think, as you know, sitting on the Waste Disposal Committee. But later on this fall, we will be putting together a request for proposals for the disposal of solid waste to pick up the gap for the disposal contract that's going to be created the following July. I want to take advantage while I'm putting an RFP out on the, on the market for disposal at the same time to include options for curbside collection. We, we want to be, to be able to reassess our in-house operation to see how it compares to contractual curbside collection as an alternate. And at the same time, I'm hoping to be able to take the recommendations of the Waste Disposal Committee, which is looking at pay-as-you-throw options, and perhaps putting those out as part of this proposal as well in terms of other options for, say, a hybrid pay-as-you-throw system. I don't want to tip the hand of the committee because the recommendation hasn't been made yet, but, but nonetheless, you know, forward thinking requires me to at least look at some of the alternates going forward. And one of the alternates may be a hybrid pay-as-you-throw system where we provide a, another TOTA for, for municipal solid waste and use our automated collection for picking that up to try to take advantage of efficiencies and automated collection. Lot of moving pieces in sanitation that we are going to be working on this fall and through the winter to try to put it all together so that I can come back before you next spring with recommendations on going forward with the whole solid waste piece.
If there is to be, you know, a change in, in methodology when it comes to solid waste collection, this board will, will ultimately be directing that, at least through the issuance of the, the RFP, right? So when should we expect to have to be up to speed to, to contribute intelligently to that decision?
We, we're going to try to put an RFP together that gives us all, all the various options so that we can look at them. My job is to come before you and to make intelligent recommendations so, so, so that you can look at those options. While, yes, ultimately, the decision is the board's to make on which way we go here, but I have to be prepared to provide you with all the information you need to make that decision. That's going to be a very difficult task to put all, pull all that together.
Is that the spring or the fall is one of those?
Well, it'll probably be in the spring, I believe, yeah.
I think we're probably going to try to coordinate it with the budget process.
Yeah.
For next year or?
Yeah, for next year.
For fiscal fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yes.
But so in, in calendar year 2014, working on the budget process for fiscal 2015? I thought that I heard that the contract expired in June of 2014. Did I misunderstand that?
No, that's correct.
It does, but that's, because it's such a.
The end of fiscal 14.
There's so much policy related to it that that's a process that needs to start in advance.
We need to start.
It expires?
In June of 2014.
A year from now.
June, a year from now.
A year from now, we need to have a new contract. So the RFP will be coming?
This fall.
This fall?
In order, particularly because, as the commissioner mentions.
We're going to evaluate the, the RFP and make some recommendations in the context of the budget process. So we'll be coming here, and hopefully, the decision will pretty, pretty much be made by this time next year.
But because of potential changes to the, what would I call it, methodology?
No, no, I, I understood that. I, I might, I might have misunderstood when you were thinking of getting the RFP out there.
This fall.
This fall?
Yes.
Slakman-Daly?
Yeah, well, Andy, I want to say to you and Kevin and everyone who was involved that I know it was a very difficult year in terms of snow and ice, and I appreciate how much hard work went into getting things cleared up. And I just wanted to ask you, I assume you keep looking to see if there's equipment that makes that job easier. Are, are there new things on the market or are plows still the same as they ever were?
We're always looking at new things and new technology, believe me. And, you know, we try to keep up with it. We do have a fleet, I think, in this town that's second to none. We pay particular attention to our snow fighting equipment because that's the stuff that we really need when the chips are down. You know, there's a lot of stuff out there that other communities use, you know, like snow melting machines and, you know, things of technology, like, you know, very large snow throwers and that. Some of those work in, in rural-type towns. Some of them don't work in urban-type towns. We have a mixture of both urban and rural. So we have to be very careful that the equipment that we buy that here that will actually work here. We've found that our methods are time-tested here and generally, you know, while we do update the equipment and use newer types of equipment, we know it works and we know it doesn't work. And to waste, you know, four hundred thousand dollars on a piece of equipment that melts snow and may not work in every area of town would probably not be the best route for us to go. So, but we, yes, we are very cognizant on what we purchase for snow equipment.
Did we try that salt solution this, this year?
We do pre-treat, but we, we usually, we do, we don't use the pre-emergent, no. But sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't work. The temperature has to be just right, or it doesn't work. So sometimes you can create more problems. Snow finding is an art, far like going to war.
No, go ahead.
While we're talking about snow and ice and road conditions, I wanted to ask Peter, on Fisher Avenue, on the downhill, just before you get Route Nine. There seems to be water coming right out of the middle of the road. And it's icing up still on these cold mornings that we're still having. What's going on there? I've never seen anything like it before.
We, we do get quite, depending on the height of the groundwater table, we do get groundwater breaking out on, on a lot of our hills. Fisher, Fisher Hill is noted for that. And, you know, a lot of times it used to break out further up towards the top of the hill in front of our water department property. When you go in and you change the topography sometimes of areas, there it changes where the water breaks out. It's always going to break out somewhere. That is groundwater. We know that for a fact because every time it breaks out, just to be certain that we don't have a water main break there, we do test it for fluoride content to make sure that it is not potable water. So that most definitely is groundwater. In terms of icing, we can pay a little bit more attention to that and get sanders out on occasion.
Well, I know you've got the barricades, and I see you're on top of it, but I've never seen anything like it before.
It has broken out there in the past, but.
Seems to be a river just forming right out of the middle of the street.
It's higher than normal this year.
Okay, other questions? Slakman-Benka?
Could you talk a little bit about the Performance Measurement Initiative and what emerged from that in terms of your processes and your measurement and evaluation, your self-evaluation? Where did, where did that lead?
I didn't bring any of the hard data with me, but I can tell you, the budget that you have before you and that you've looked at over the years has, and a section called Performance Workload Indicators. Those generally measure the volumes of work that we do.
Right.
And they don't necessarily speak to the, the efficiency of how well that work is done. is done. By using performance measurements, we're trying to convert, taking pure totalized volume data and to convert it into a measure, into a, a, a piece of data that somehow measures our performance. How well are we doing a particular item of work? That's what performance measurement does. So we're trying to tweak all of those indicators that you see in the budget and rewrite them so that we can get a measurement as to how well we think we're doing in terms of, and I'll give you an example, because we have one example that really stands out. We have a pavement management system in town that, that measures the, what we call the Pavement Condition Index of every road segment in town. The Pavement Condition Index is a number from one to 100 that tells us how, what, you know, where, what type of condition that road is in, from one being the worst to 100 being the best road service. And when those roads are evaluated and analyzed, every segment of road, and that could be multiple segments on one road, has what we call a Pavement Condition Index. So one of, you know, and we can, we, we, at the, with current systems, we have no idea how well we're doing as a town overall in terms of measuring, you know, how well is our pa, is our roadway replacement program working? Are we keeping ahead of the game or are we falling behind? Are our roads, are our roads on average getting better or worse? Performance measurement gives us a tool so that we can actually measure that. And what we're planning on doing, we, we are, you did award a contract to Face, Wofford and Dondike just recently. We're, we're going to build a brand-new pavement management system and then re-inspect all of our roads so that we have real accurate data going forward. We're then going to calculate what we call the Average Pavement Condition Index for all the streets in town. It's going to be a number. It may be, say, 54 is the Average Pavement Condition Index. And then as we rebuild streets going forward and we actually go into the system and adjust the pavement condition for new roads, that number will vary. Well, hopefully it's going to go up and it'll tell us that we're doing a better job and it'll tell us by how much better that job is that we're doing. So it's actually measuring performance now and not just total work volumes or workload volumes. And that's just one example of some of the things we're looking at.
Did that emerge from the Collins Center?
Yes, it did.
Interesting, yeah. I, the, the Fire Chief, Chief Ford, I know the Collins Center has been doing this, DPW process was one, I think, as you mentioned, the police, they, they had a session on police, I believe, and I think they're doing one on April 25th that Chief Ford is going to be participating in for the Fire Department. So that'll be also a very interesting process to, to see how performance is quantified and, and evaluated in that department.
I can give you just a couple of other examples of what we're talking about in terms of performance measurement. That was one in terms of pavement condition, one that we're, we're, we're hoping will show, you know, overall how we're doing in our road construction project. We came up with a, a way to measure the effectiveness of traffic calming projects, as you mentioned before. And we actually came up with a way of doing a calculation that would give us an index as to how well a traffic calming project was doing by calculation of the, the motor vehicle speed profile before and after the project, taking that data into consideration, traffic volume counts and accident history data, you know, using the 85th percentile of speed. And all of that data crunched into some sort of an index number that would allow us to determine whether, how effective that particular project was and then to be able to measure it against other projects. So that's just another example of performance measurement. And there are several more that we're, we're looking at.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Other? Sackman Daley?
Yeah, I have some questions, I, I think, for Ms. Gallantine.
Oh, well then, before, before we bring up Ms. Gallantine, and I think probably the Commissioner can answer this, he knows I have a special interest in high visibility crosswalks. So I'm wondering if now that we think it's spring, or it ought to be spring, are we going to do some more higher visibility crosswalks? I'm thinking the Washington and Cypress intersection, for example, might benefit from something like that.
Yes, as you know, we did a few pilots already.
Yep.
The pilot in, in Coolidge Corner has held up very, very well. We're very pleased with the performance of that. It's a little bit more expensive, that one, you know, a bit more expensive.
But perhaps it lasts longer?
Well, if you look at the one we did right out here at the Health Center, that one was very attractive when we first did it. It's not holding up so well. It was a less, a less costly option, which is what we're trying to measure. We're trying to see what works and what doesn't work. So we're kind of tending away from that one and more towards the Coolidge Corner model. And I think that we're ready to roll out another, probably do another pilot using that same technology in another area of town. We haven't selected it yet, but we'll certainly look at the area.
Well, Washington and Cypress is very heavily used by pedestrians and in particular, I know many students from the high school are coming and going along there. And it seems to me, just in terms of traffic safety and pedestrian safety, it would be one for you to give serious thought to.
Yeah, and we will do that.
Okay. Ms. Gallantine?
Well, I would usually be complimenting you about the flowers in bloom, but this year, since it's so cold and hardly anything's in bloom yet, I, I can't do that. But I noticed you are continuing with that program.
Yes.
So you're putting in some more bulbs or you put them in in the, in the fall?
We put them in in the fall, in the late fall. And we've, since the Brookline Tertentennial, that was sort of a gift to the town and we've continued with that every year since then.
I'm sure I will enjoy them at, at some point.
Absolutely.
But on, on your turf grass restoration, you did 162 acres was the actual for 2012. And so was, is that your overseeding program or that's where you really removed the whole turf and resawn or something?
No, that's, that is, that is turf management and maintenance. So it's everything from overseeding, top dressing, aerating, fertilization. It's, it's the comprehensive program that we frankly do with our athletic field maintenance crew.
Well, it's, it seems pretty successful. I think things are looking, they're looking better, the services, I think, in the last few years.
Oh, good, great, thank you. We, we feel that that is, is a constant challenge for us, just balancing the use and the conditions, wet weather in particular, but...
I did hear complaints, though, at Runcle because you're, you're not letting them use their playground.
I know. We, we're working with a principal there and she's hoping that we can help her get the grass well established so that it, you know, can sustain the type of use that gets longer. So they've actually been really good and, and we'll, we'll get them on there very soon. You know, I, I, just to add, I think that the three synthetic turf fields that we have now has really helped us in terms of, you know, put our highest demand and play on those fields. So it, it certainly has been, I think, a great benefit to our maintenance program and also to the users.
And the, on the public shade trees, I noticed the actuals for 2012 removed was 160 and, but planted 285. So that was significantly higher than the year before, which was 225.
It, it was. A couple of reasons. One is we've had a few hard years with severe weather, which has taken its toll on our public shade trees. But we are also working right now with a vendor where we are getting very competitive wholesale rates for trees. And so we're able to actually stretch our dollar further. We've been able to purchase more.
Any other questions for Ms. Gallantine? Why don't we have her? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, are we...
Just before I move on to water and sewer...
Yeah, I think so. I think you may.
I, I just wanted to thank you for your comments relative to snow removal efforts this year and preface it by saying I will be coming back before you in a few months to reconcile the budget. And I won't scare you off right now, but...
It's a big number.
There'll be some action that's going to need to be taken, probably sometime in, towards the end of May, so.
Okay.
There'll be more to come on that. The water and sewer budget, the total budget is $27,214,323. That represents a 3.4% increase over FY13 or roughly $882,000 increase over the budget. Personnel, again, makes up 9% of the water budget. And remember that the Water and Sewer Enterprise, the numbers are skewed because of the high assessment numbers that we paid to MWRA. We pay, nearly 70% of the budget is paid for the, the purchase of wholesale water and the disposal of wastewater back to MWRA. So 70% of the total budget is a pass-through to, back to MWRA.
Or, or to be more specific, 18 million plus or minus.
Yes, 18,883,000. I will tell you that as I get further into this, that was predicated on the February estimates from MWRA of what the assessments would be. Those numbers have gone down substantially in, in March. Originally, we were talking about a $246,000 increase in the water assessment. That has now been reduced to a $228,000 increase, so a minor, minor decrease there. The big story is in sewer. The original increase was $416,000, give or take. That has now been reduced to about a $100,000 increase. So, so we've picked up about $300,000 or so in reductions.
Now, I remember something very weird about this, like the more we conserve, the more we pay.
Well, that's...
Right?
That was partially true in the old days. In the old days, when we had flat rate water rates, that was, that was very true, you know, as, as, as sales decreased, our revenue would decrease. In order to make up our fixed costs, we would have to increase the rates to cover that. So, yeah, you know, a lot of times the more that you conserve, the higher you paid for, for what you continue to use. When we did change the rate a couple of fiscal years ago, I think it was in FY12, we changed the rate structure to include a base charge and a two-step tier rate going forward. Part of the motivation for doing that was so that we could remove some of the overhead costs from the volatility in sales, taking it away from a volume-based volatility because sales had continued to decrease and it was, had been decreasing for many, many years. It's still continuing to decrease, although not at the rate that it was before. And by removing, by adopting the base charge that you did adopt, we renewed, removed basically one-third of the expenses out of the volume side of the equation. And it has made a difference, I believe, in terms of our revenue volatility with decreasing sales. So I think that portion has worked. And to your question, to your original question, so, so while it's true that, you know, the more you save, the higher you pay, instead of paying 100% of that higher, you're only paying 2/3 of that. So, so there's a little bit of change in that, that, that methodology. It's kind of complicated, the rate model, but I think all in all, it's, it's working and it's working well.
Good.
So, so those numbers will probably, those reduced numbers in the MWRA assessments will appear as budget adjustments later run. There is a reimbursement to the general fund of an increase of about $270,000 and that's basically to cover increased healthcare, health insurance costs and OPEPs. As you know, that the Water and Sewer Enterprise does pick up the cost of OPEPs in its budget and that increase covers part of that. You know, other than that, the service and supplies pots of the water and sewer budget are fairly, fairly level funded every year. We don't change it much because of the volatility of the MWRA assessments. Our debt service has been decreasing a little bit with the conclusion of the cement lining program for the water mains several years ago. We are seeing reductions in debt service on the water side of things. We have seen a slight reduction in debt service on the sewer, although that will change from year to year. There are a few more major sewer projects to get through, to complete that. Not the, the sewer separation project notwithstanding in, in the Beacon Street area. I will tell you that that project is coming to a close within the next several months. We will be doing the final pavement restoration and, and sprucing up of the commercial area down there in the next several months and hope to be out of there by July 1st. So no one's happier than we are.
But I do have, I think, as a sort of follow-up to the fact that it sounds like that work will be completed, the Army Corps of Engineers work at the Landmark Center is actually going to sort of flow a little bit into that part of Brookline. Am I correct?
Well, there, yes, you're, you're correct that the Muddy River Project has begun. That project is right now concentrated on the Brookline Avenue's area.
Right, right.
And, and will be pretty much limited to that area. There's some work going on right in front of the Landmark Center, going to take place with some reconfiguration of the driveways there. But not a lot happening that will, that will affect Brookline traffic, I don't believe. There's a second project that's also been going on and it's, I think it's particularly confusing to folks. The contractor that's doing our sewer separation project, he's finished most of the underground work for us, but coincidentally, he was a successful bidder for Boston Water and Sewer right next door on a water main project.
Ah, okay.
So you still see those big orange trucks there.
Ah, okay.
But they're not working for us any longer. They're working for Boston Water and Sewer. So that's been the source of some confusion going forward. That water main project was, was actually occurring simultaneously on St. Mary Street and a small section of Beacon Street at the same time we were wrapping up our sewer separation project. So there was a little bit of overlap there and we are working with Boston Water and Sewer to make sure that their work is done because when we go in and do the final pavement on St. Mary Street and on Beacon Street and Monmouth and Collin, it's, we don't want anybody touching that pavement. So we're, we're going the extra mile to make sure that all that work is done and we don't have to go back in there for quite some time.
Good.
So there's been some confusion about that, but I don't think that the, what's going on, at least in the near future on the Muddy River Project is going to impact us terribly much.
Good. Sackman Daley?
Well, we definitely have to have Mr. Trainer come up to the podium there. I can't believe it. Forty-four years and you're leaving us?
I assume that was an April Fool's joke.
Yeah.
That was my conclusion.
Well, what are you going to do with yourself?
What am I going to do with myself? I'll have plenty of time to sort that out, I guess.
You'll be lost. I think you'll be begging Andy to have your job back.
I don't know about that so much.
Well, thank you very much for your many, many years.
Thank you very much. Thank you. It's been, it's been a pleasure. Forty-four years has gone by in a hurry. And I started here as a student and I couldn't have picked a better place to work in my entire career. So I appreciate all the people that I've worked for and worked with over this, over that time, so.
And, and I think we particularly appreciate having somebody who's got a lot of institutional memory, which I'm sure has been very helpful in getting us through things like digging up Beacon Street and for the local folks there at least, who felt like it was permanent torture. I think we, as the, the project managers, have done everything we could to make it as painless as possible. And I also know that going through the rate change was another big transition where a great many members of the public started off being confused and alarmed, but I, I do believe that that now is very happily implemented and working very successfully.
At first, we fielded a lot of questions at the office, confusion-type questions, but they've seemed to almost nonexistent lately.
Right, right. So we've, we've gone through that. Good. Other comments, questions?
I, I just want to say, we've gone through the rate change.
Yeah.
It was a, a long process and it really has been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Phil.
Right. Enjoy your retirement.
I just want to add that Phil, you probably don't know, but Phil was born and raised in the town of Brookline, just as I was. So it's really a, a, a major accomplishment for somebody to be born and raised here, go through the school system in Brookline and, and rise through the ranks from pretty much the bottom to the top, you know, in his field. So Phil's been a real asset to work with and we're really going to miss him going forward.
Did you have to work anyplace else, Phil, in all?
No, I don't think I did.
Your only employer? That's amazing.
Not that he'll admit.
Then, then your last and parting gift to us must be to be sure that there is someone in the sort of pipeline who'll be able to fill that slot.
Please.
We're working on it.
Pipeline, did you have?
Sorry, couldn't resist.
The only, the only last piece that I want to say about water and sewer is a follow-up to what I told you a year ago, that we promised you that we were going to roll out... out an online, uh, customer access database for our water and sewer customers, so folks could go online...
Yes.
...and punch in their account numbers and look at their whole history...
Yes.
...and their payment history, and, and see their consumption and everything, and we are marching forward with that. Uh, we did have a little bit of a hiccup, meaning that the, uh, our physical infrastructure that was in place on our automated meter reading system, uh, had to be upgraded to accept the changes for this new, uh, Wi-Fi-based program, so we had to take a step backwards and reconfigure some of the equipment and, and modernize it and update it, and, you know, upload some new versions of the, uh, billing software programs, so, so that's in the process of, uh, being completed this spring, uh, the, the installation of the new data collectors, and once that happens, we'll be working over the summer to try to do the computer programming necessary to actually make this happen, so it will happen.
I look forward to it.
So if, I'll open it up for questions on water and sewer, or if we have an answer.
Slavman Daley?
I just had one quick one. Um, I noticed that, uh, you were estimating for 2013 that the water demand was gonna go up slightly, but the sanitary flow was gonna go down slightly, according to your estimates, and I'm wondering what, where, how you came up with that, I...
The water consumption, you mean?
You, you have water consumption going up a little bit, but sanitary going down.
Yes. It's, it's almost a mystical science estimating those numbers.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, water consumption is, is, is very easy to project going forward, you can look at past trends, you can see, you know, whether the, if the line is trending upwards or downwards or staying the same, so, uh, I've been saying this for a long time, and Steve Sorrell will, uh, probably argue with me, but I've been saying for a long time that, you know, when you have long periods of declining consumption, at some point it has to bottom out, uh, and it has to level off, and perhaps even start to come back up a little bit, and I think that we're nearing that point, which is why I estimated that going forward, water consumption was probably gonna rise back up slightly, uh, in fiscal fourteen, uh, and we put those numbers in because those numbers are important for us as we predict what we may take in, in revenue. At the same time, we're spending millions of dollars, uh, in trying to remove the infamous I-N-I. Uh, you, you heard me talk over the years about infiltration and inflow, uh, from our sewer system. You realize that we pay, for every gallon that we dispose of in the sewer system, we pay MWRA to take that away and treat it for us, so if we can save flow, uh, we can save money, basically. The sewer separation project that, that was of so much consternation to everybody, did have some benefits, and one of the benefits is that we removed the last section of combined sewer in the town of Brookline. Combined sewer, meaning sewer pipes that collected both rainwater and sewerage. Uh, we were able to separate the drain, the rainwater from the sewerage, so we're no longer gonna be paying for all of that rainwater to go to Deer Island to get treated. That's gonna show up as a significant reduction, or, or at least a, a trending down reduction in the volume of wastewater, uh, that we process, uh, through Deer Island. Having said all of that, I need to caution you, though, it's, all this stuff is, is, uh, is tied to the climate as well, you know? You get a couple of hundred-year storms, or fifty-year storms, or even twenty-five-year storms. We still have a lot of sewers that are leaky sewers that, within areas of high groundwater, allow groundwater to infiltrate the sewer, uh, and it increases the flow, so, you know, we're trying our hardest to, to remove all of that, but, uh, sometimes it's, uh, like sticking your thumb in the dyke, so...
What's, what's the effect of, like, last summer was a very hot summer, so people were probably watering their plants...
More.
...more. Is that noticeable effect, uh, based on whether it's a hot summer or not?
It is, you do, you do see that in the data, uh, but we always get, generally get an increase in flow in the summertime anyway because of that.
Okay, I think we need to move on, folks. Um, save your questions for Mr. Pepe Sturgeon, who will, I'm sure, answer privately anything that he has not been able to give us tonight. Um, thank you very much, thank you all for coming, and obviously, we're not voting the budget now, but you'll hear from us eventually.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When we talk about the CIP, or...
Yeah, they're gonna, I'm pretty gonna stay for the CIP.
Yeah, I believe some of them will actually have something to say or be prepared to comment. Answer questions. Certainly affects DPW. Okay, um, shift gears slightly, and are we gonna start with the unclassified, or...
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Yep. So the unclassified budget, which is on, uh, page one-thirty-five, uh, in the financial plan, section four.
Yep.
Run through this, uh, pretty quickly, just highlight the changes. Uh, printing of warrants and reports, which is basically all the costs associated with the town meeting, printing of, uh, combined reports, financial plans, annual reports, all of that, um, and that we, uh, expecting an increase there, five thousand dollars. Um, some of that is associated with the electronic voting system, both staffing that and, uh, maintenance of that system. MMA dues, uh, coming down, um, slightly, about a thousand dollars. Uh, general insurance, uh, increase there, estimated to be sixty thousand dollars, uh, about twenty-two percent. If there's any questions on that, I know David Genikakis is, is available to, uh, answer that. Um, going down to the last couple, which are all directly associated with our, uh, free cash policy and, uh, our reserve policies, uh, the first one is the liability and catastrophe fund, uh, policy recommends one percent, um, that fund be equivalent to one percent of prior year net revenue, uh, which is basically about two million dollars, um, so in order to reach that threshold, we need to put in a hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand dollars of free cash, and the reason why it shows a reduction is because in the current fiscal year thirteen, we had to put more in because the drawdown on that fund in twelve was a lot larger, um, so if you have less draw, drawdown in one year, the following year, you don't need as much free cash to build that fund up. The bottom line is, a one-fifty-four thousand gets us up to the one percent threshold. Affordable Housing Trust Fund, if you recall, we revamped this policy a couple of years ago, uh, and it says that if the fund balance in that fund is less than five million dollars, then free cash after the first four priorities, which are the general reserve fund, um, um, overall, unreserved fund balances, our capital, um, plan, and the, uh, liability fund, whatever's left after that, fifteen percent of it goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so if you do the math out, um, five-fifty-five, one-oh-six is required to go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Uh, stabilization fund, um, as I said, the second, uh, priority in the free cash, um, sequencing is, uh, our overall fund balance levels, and what we're doing or recommending with free cash for fiscal fourteen is, uh, leaving two million dollars unappropriated, um, which helps with the overall undesigned fund balance, and then putting in a quarter of a million dollars directly into the stabilization fund, which, the way it's calculated at the end of the fiscal year, uh, by the orders, um, under the new, um, accounting standards, is actually part of undesigned fund balance, but under mass, uh, finance law, it's different. It's a, it's our stabilization fund, it takes a two-thirds vote to put money in and take, uh, get money out, um, but this is basically a two-pronged approach to continue to, um, shore up our overall fund balance position. And then the last one is the reserve fund, which is under the control of the advisory committee. Uh, policy says one percent prior year net revenue, um, and what that, uh, translates into is, is to just over two million dollars, and our policy says that three-quarters of that should be funded from ongoing revenue, which is one-and-a-half million, and the balance, or half a million dollars, comes from free cash. So overall, it's an increase of about eighty-one thousand dollars. So that is the three-and-a-half-million-dollar unclassified budget.
Questions? Yes, Slavman Daley?
Uh, I guess this is for Mr. Genikakis. The, um, insurance is going up twenty-one percent, twenty, almost twenty-two percent, which seems like a big increase.
David Genikakis, Chief Procurement Officer. Um, regarding the insurance, a couple of factors have, uh, all converged on the, uh, the next year's insurance, uh, premium estimates. Uh, the two schools, the Runkel and the Heath, have come off the builder's risk policy, uh, and both of those schools are valued at higher numbers than they were in prior years, so that's caused the, um, uh, the overall valuation in the town, of town buildings to increase rather substantially. The other thing is the insurance market, due to Hurricane Sandy, uh, has taken a pretty decent uptick, and, uh, that has caused all of the reinsurers and the insurance market in general to, uh, to increase. We're seeing that increase over this year and into next year, uh, and that's why the, the request for the increase, because the, the anticipated premiums in FY, in fiscal year fourteen, uh, are gonna be substantially higher than we have had in the past. We also had a rate lock for the past two years, so all these things converged at once. We were locked in for the previous two years, FY thirteen and FY twelve. Coming all together, it, uh, it, it necessitated this, uh, sort of a, uh, good-sized large increase.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Genikakis. Uh, do we have any other questions in this budget category? Okay, Mr. Cronin, do the CIP, da-da-da-da-da.
I know we're running a little bit late, so I certainly shorten this, um, no need to go through all this, 'cause you've heard this.
And we can also come back, we're not gonna be voting on this tonight, so we can come back.
No, no, no votes tonight.
Correct, yeah, actually, while I'm trying to get this going, um, I hope, next week, we'll provide the board with an overall update, uh, in terms of the budget, advisory committee, what they've done, it's really only one change so far, um, and then we hope to have the board voted by, um, I think it's the nineteenth, whatever that Tuesday is, getting toward the end of the month, 'cause we've gotta print combined reports and all that stuff, so, over the next few weeks, hopefully finalize everything. Um, all right, so, CIP, um, we presented the preliminary CIP back on December fourth. Um, there's been some changes, which I'll get into, which were, um, in the, in the financial plan, um, and then I'll also explain what's happened since the release of the financial plan, which is pretty much not, uh, not a lot. Um, so it's a hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar CIP, uh, six-year CIP, about thirty percent of it's actually funded with outside monies, which is, um, important, most of that's coming from the state, uh, for MSBA school projects. Um, overcrowding in the schools continues, continues to, to drive the CIP, uh, this year more so than ever. Uh, devotion school, um, we upped the estimate to ninety million dollars based upon the estimate, uh, provided by HMFH through their concept study. Um, we also have some new non-school-related items that have put some pressure on the CIP, uh, municipal service center renovations, which is a two-and-a-half-million-dollar project, uh, Fisher Hill Park, uh, one-point-two-million-dollar, uh, project, both of those are new items that were not in the CIP, um, before, and there's also a three-million-dollar, uh, part of the classroom capacity issue, a three-million-dollar, um, bond for the old Lincoln School. So because of all these pressures, a number of projects, uh, were pushed back or eliminated. Um, there's a ton of pressure in the out-years of the CIP, and that will only get worse once and if we get a, uh, estimate for high school work, um, that, that too is being studied by HMFH, and, uh, some estimates should be available, um, toward the end of the spring and into the summer, so that we can build that into, um, next year's CIP, and I should say that the, uh, B-Space Committee, which, uh, two of you sit on, is obviously going through this in great, great detail, and that's gonna inform, um, next year's CIP, um, as well. Um, but even with all these pressures, we continue to invest in our parks and our playgrounds, our infrastructure, the streets, sidewalks, water, sewer, invest in technology, um, we continue to upgrade our fire apparatus, there's new trucks in here, and, uh, updating all of the fire stations as well. Um, we talked about in the past the cemetery, and how their monies can be better utilized, uh, for both operating and capital purposes. In the CIP, for the first time, we actually have, um, a million dollars, um, of projects built in. Uh, in the first couple of years, it's, I think, a quarter of a million, and the big nut is seven-hundred thousand, which is, uh, I think FY twenty, um, but that would be for the expansion of the cemetery, so we've, we've been working with the cemetery trustees, um, on that. Um, and then, as, uh, actually, Andy mentioned, um, the biggest, um, in my opinion, investment in capital to yield operating budget relief, which is the last bullet, uh, good example is the LED project, um, but we, energy efficient, we invest in energy efficiency, uh, IT, a lot of investments that have yielded, uh, positive, positive results for our operating budget. Um, you all know how the, um, CIP is put together in terms of funding, six percent policy, which drives it, and then we use free cash, um, to bring it up to seven-and-a-half percent if available. So what's changed from, uh, December? Um, free cash came in, two million dollars, two-point-one-million dollars greater than, um, anticipated, which is, uh, good news. Um, so what we had built the CIP on was a seven-and-a-half-million-dollar certification, which resulted in three-and-a-half million dollars being used for, for the, uh, CIP. Now we're using four-point-eight million dollars, um, in the CIP, and what we did with that additional one-point-three million was we brought forward one-point-one-million dollars of projects to really take the pressure off the out-years, rather than in putting money in fiscal fourteen for new projects, it made more sense to pull broad, projects forward, because we have all that pressure in the out-years of the CIP, you pull it forward, you help, uh, take a bit of that pressure off in the out-years. Um, and what that ended up resulting in is, in FY nineteen, if you recall, um, we had to, um, eliminate a number of what we call annual CIP items, trees, IT, park playground, those types of investments, we had to punt a year on those, but now by pulling projects forward, we were able to put them back in. So that was the first thing we did. The second thing we did, um, discussions with the school as a way to help out with their operating budget, um, we agreed to put a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of, um, monies in here for school IT investments, um, and I know Peter's here, if there's questions on exactly what that buys, um, he can speak to that. And the last thing, um, a, a late request, and we've, uh, spoken to folks, um, make sure to get these in, uh, on time, which they've, they've promised, uh, but there was a late request for forty thousand dollars for the annual bicycle access improvement, uh, program, uh, so that's built in here as well. So that, that's the first thing that we did, was utilize additional free, uh, ca, free cash for those, uh, four purposes. Uh, next thing we did was in discussion with the fire chief, we'd originally planned on using a half a million dollars to replace the SCBA, which is a self-contained breathing apparatus, um, we had that in fiscal seventeen, but after going through operating discussion, discussions, we felt it made more sense to do that over a three- or four-year period through the operating budget, rather than have it all done in one fell swoop, because all the warranties would expire at the same time, so it's a, we seem to believe that's a better approach over the long term. And then the last thing we did, um, the, the preliminary CIP had a two-million-dollar estimate for the municipal service center work, uh, Commissioner Pepe Sturgeon has worked, uh, very hard with the architect to get the, uh, estimate, um, down from where it could have been, but, um, it's higher than what we had in the financial, in the preliminary CIP, so we had to add an additional half a million dollars to that project, and we've adjusted the debt management plan accordingly. Now this is frozen. All right? It's okay, we've got, there we go, all right. So what, uh, in terms of the advisory committee? Okay, now what's going on inside? Kevin? Stokes doesn't know what to do anyways, okay. So what has the advisory committee done so far? Um, they've approved all of the non-school items, uh, with no changes. Um, the reason why they haven't taken up the school items yet is, my understanding is they wanna take them up, uh, the same time as they take up the operating budget discussion, which should be within a couple of weeks, so they'll come back to these items, the biggest, the biggest two being, uh, classroom capacity, one-point-seven-five million, and, uh, renovations at the old Lincoln School, three million dollars. And again, the discussions, the ongoing discussions from B-Space is playing a role in this, uh, 'cause there are a number of questions swirling about as to what's actually gonna go on. Um, so understandably, the, uh, both the capital subcommittee and the full committee haven't, um, voted those yet. As I said, all other projects have been approved, fire, uh, DPW, IT, um, et cetera, all those have been approved. There's been one, um, language change, um, so when we come before you with Article Eight, you know, the very long convoluted budget vote with all the, uh, language associated with the CIP items, um, this will be in there, and it's associated with the Fisher Hill Park, and it was approved by the, um, full advisory committee, and it says, "No funds shall be expended for the gatehouse until plan, plans for the preservation of the gatehouse are approved by the Preservation Commission." Um, so basically, that portion of that project would not move forward until the, uh, Preservation Commission blesses the plans for that.
Could I, yeah, could I just stop there? That language just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and I think we've gotta probably fiddle with that. I think if the idea is to ensure that there's sufficient funds for the gatehouse, um, this almost goes backwards, and it's almost a copla, you know, it...
Whatever language you have, we'll take back.
It's counterproductive.
Somebody you know, I think, crafted that language, but we'll work on that.
Yeah, I know, and, um, I, I think, I think that language, uh, needs some revision.
Yeah, sure, we've got, like I said, uh, plenty of time before Article Eight...
Look, it's just what the advisory committee did, don't worry about it.
But what, if, if you have better language, we'll, we'll take it back, uh, to them, under Article Eight. Major problems, skip these things, um, you've seen these before. Um, I already touched on free cash, in terms of what this means for the, uh, CIP, is four-point-eight million dollars of free cash being used, but I wanna just highlight on here is that to get to our seven-and-a-half percent policy, it's three million dollars. We're using an additional one-point-eight million dollars because of all the pressure that's on the CIP, uh, so in total, four-point-eight million dollars, uh, from free cash going toward, uh, the CIP. Um, this shows a hundred-and-seventy-one million dollars, um, you can see that most of it, almost fifty percent of it, is funded with bonds. You can see that most of it, almost 50% of it, is funded with bonds. The biggest piece of that is the devotion school project. Second biggest piece, I mentioned it earlier, is about 30% of it comes from outside funding, state and federal grants. Debt management plan, impossible to read, I know, but it's important just to show folks how we do plan out our debt over a six-year period. And what it shows is the projects on the left, how much we're going to bond the term, meaning how many years we're going to borrow for, and then you'll see the impact. And what the four boxes show is what's really impacting the CIP, and that's the devotion school project. So our plan is to ban for that, which is a bond anticipation note, short-term borrowing for three years until the project's ready for cash flow reasons. Then at that point, we're going to borrow all of it. And the impact there, it's tough to see, but that's $4.9 million of debt service for the devotion school once fully kicked in. But again, it's important because this debt management plan is really what drives pulling together the CIP and what amounts of money left over for pay-as-you-go capital. We do the same thing for enterprise funds. Then, this is, do want to stay on this for a second. Again, it speaks to the pressure that the CIP is under. If you look at the first four years of this, on the left is percent breakout of our 6% policy. On the right, that breaks it into dollars. You see that we're consistently, a pretty good split between cash and debt. And then it goes very much into the debt direction in fiscal 18 and 19. Again, that's because of the devotion school. So what that, the reason why this is important is because it translates into only $700,000 of pay-as-you-go being available out of the 6%, which is a very low number. We've never been that before. As you can see, we're always in the $3 or $4 million range. So this picture really does show the extent to which the CIP is under pressure, again, primarily because of a $90 million project, 60% of which we're assuming the town paid for it and the state paid for the rest. Go through this each year as well. You see, the red is our debt running off, and then we're replacing that with new debt, which goes back to the debt management plan slide. But again, here's the devotion school kicking in in FY18. I'll skip some of these things. In total, you know, folks often wonder how much money is actually going to the CIP. I think, I hope that this one slide shows it all. You can see that in fiscal 14, almost $17 million of revenue is going to the CIP, $12 million plus from our 6% policy, and then $4.8 million from free cash. And if you look at the out-years, it starts at about $16 million and ramps up to $18. It should grow because it's tied to revenue. It's, and if revenue grows, this should grow. And then you'll see here, we reach our 7.5% policy in each of the years. The reason why it's 8.4 here, if you go back when I explained how free cash goes toward it, we're using more free cash than necessary, and that's what gets you up over the 7.5% policy for fiscal 14. Again, virtually impossible to read up here. It's in our financial plan. What this goes to show is that we have a number of policies, and we follow all of them. You know, debt service, capital, debt services, percent of income, all those standard debt measurement variables we have, and we're meeting them. You've seen these, but I'll close with these because, again, this is the biggest driver of the CIP, and it's the enrollment issue in the schools. You know, what you see here is the smaller classroom, smaller grades, I should say, starting to make their way out of the elementary schools, being replaced by much larger-sized classes. So this is what's driving the enrollment growth here. You see, there's 25, almost 2,500 in this four-grade span versus 2,000 in this four-grade span. So an additional 500 kids in the lower grades. And then this shows the number of sections. It's grown 46 over a, what's that, nine- or 10-year period? And if this trend continues, it will be a growth of 72 classrooms in the next five years, which, again, is really driving the issue that the B-Space Committee is having in others. And this is the worst of all, so we thank Peter for this. This shows the historical high school enrollment over here in the projection. So what this basically takes is all the kids that are in the younger grades making their way forward into high school. And once those larger class sizes start reaching the high school, you have more kids than the facility can hold. So that's the next big issue that we've got to deal with, which is how do you address these needs at the high school? So this CIP addresses it, we think, pretty comprehensively. We're recommending another $1.75 million for what we've been calling classroom capacity. In the past, this has been a lot of work by the building department. You know, Charlie and his group have created classroom spaces out of non-classroom spaces. What it's going to be used for going forward would be the late, the leasing costs associated with buildings, non-traditional school buildings, a couple temples. Then it would be used for preschool space. It would also go towards paying the costs associated with lease purchasing of modulars. Believe the plan is to move forward with four classrooms of modulars at the Lawrence School. So we would lease finance those over a four- or five-year period, and these monies would go toward that. And then where possible, if possible, in the existing schools, some classrooms would be carved out as well. $3 million for old Lincoln School, I mentioned that. Been an awful lot of talk about the ninth school. I'm quite sure there's an agreement as to what the ninth school is, or should be, or can be. But old Lincoln plays some role in that equation, and we've got a $3 million bond in here to start bringing that school up to be used as another school building. The high school, I already mentioned, there's no money in here. We know it's coming. HMFH is working on that. And what is ultimately done there goes back to the discussion of what's going to be done to help address the elementary school issue. As you've heard and read, there's options ranging from a, you know, including, I should say, an eight-nine school model, which would then address the high school needs with a separate facility. But a lot more talk on that. And then devotion school, I mentioned that, $90 million estimate, and, you know, that's it. So an awful lot of pressure on the CIP. But even with that being said, I think folks can see that there's still a lot of investment going on in that core. Items like streets and sidewalks, water and sewer, technology, parks, open space, trees, cemeteries, all that, it's still in here. Yes, we had to defer some projects, but with the issue before everybody, meaning the schools, something's got to give because there's only so much money that can go toward operating and capital, so. I know department heads are here if there's any questions on specific items, or I'm here for anything else.
Okay, and I just want to add a piece of information because you've made many references to the B-Space Committee, which is an acronym for which I should be able to tell you the words, but I can't, that is studying. Brookline.
And capacity exploration.
School population and capacity exploration? Okay, all right. Anyway, the purpose of that committee is to try to figure out where to put those kids that you just saw in several diagrams, several bar graphs, I guess. And what I'm saying is that there is a website where you can get recently updated, frequently asked questions that help people understand some of the issues that the committee is trying to address. And I'm not going to go into any detail at all, except to say that the committee is aware very much of the pressure as the population moves through, as each of those classes move through the system. And it is very clear that we must do something about housing them. And so there's a very helpful set of frequently asked questions which you can get to from the town's website. And I thought I would read it out to you, but it's not an easy thing to do verbally. It's at the Brookline Town website. And then there's got to be a link to these documents, and I just can't tell you where that link is. But I can say that it is available and will become more available, this document with the frequently asked questions. And we hope that it will be widely distributed so people understand the issues. And I'm sorry, I don't have the link that I can explain.
If you go to the town website, click on Boards and Commissions, click on B-Space.
Ah, right, it's under B-Space, under Boards and Commissions. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Yes, Selectman Banker.
How many, what are the current number of classrooms of devotion, and how many will be added as a result of this project?
I don't have the absolute number. We're looking to build it for 840 students. We had originally started a plan for 700. We believe the current plan accommodates 700. So it's really looking at being built for, today we'd say it's a four-section school, is how it was built. We're really building it now for a mix of fours and fives.
I'm just wondering, is the, is the current study that's underway looking at this project as potentially more of a resource for addressing the school population issue? You know, making it a larger project than that?
Well, we've gone back and forth on that. The work that we did with the MSBA, they wouldn't approve a capacity higher than the 840. So we had to work with them. They did that based on our projections.
Right. My understanding is we're pretty much locked into our agreement with the SBA at this point.
Well, we could conceivably self-fund the difference.
We, yeah, at the margin, we could really work on it. We have internal conversations that says, you know, how large do we want to go ourselves, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've heard the superintendent say he does not favor even a five-section school, but certainly not more than that because then it's too hard to administer.
Right, they're just operating issues with a school that large, so you do reach a point. On the other hand, we have to make sure that we're making a good investment and that we can deal with the students that we believe will be in that catchment area so that, you know, it's a balancing act.
Thanks, thank you.
Selectman Daley.
While Peter's up here, should I, I have another school related.
Sure, while we've got him.
Yeah, on the classroom capacity. So what, what is your plan on the, for the money you're seeking on the classroom capacity?
The major areas where we would expect to spend it would be modulars, where we'd like to put four at Lawrence School. And there'll be actually a public meeting coming on next Wednesday night to.
Does that, and does that mean they have to be in parkland? Because I thought Lawrence.
No, they'll be on, actually on the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
So, because we couldn't put them on parkland, obviously. So we had to look at the parking lot. So we've had a feasibility study done, and Flansburgh Associates has made a proposal which will be presented to the community. The school committee has supported moving forward on that, so hopefully we can get that moving forward. Our expectation is that, once we get approvals, that we'd have those completed and installed mid-year this year. Then additionally, we've gone out to bid for leased space. We've had proposals from two temples, one in South Brookline, one in North Brookline, that are proposing spaces that we anticipate we'd use for pre-K, preschool programs. And so we'd probably be relocating some of our preschools this year from our K8s, move them out, freeing up additional classrooms. And then on top of that, we'll be doing work within the schools so that it's really a mix of items, so that the... In round numbers, we might be spending, let's say, $700,000 in year one and somewhere approaching a million in year two. So that by putting the million seven-five, by having it available, it gives us some flexibility. And also, we need to do some changes in various rooms in three to four of the schools to make sure we have spaces. So that we'll be doing work in schools, we'll be looking at leasing space, and we'll be looking at modulars over the next few months.
Just actually something to address, perhaps, Selectman Banker's question about devotion. As planned, the devotion school will have preschool classrooms, but when it opens, it may not have any preschool students in it. So that adds a certain element of flexibility using leased space.
Yes, when we, when we made the first proposal, we were really anticipating, talking about a building that had, if you will, 700 K through Eights, and then a core of preschool. By the time we really got through the feasibility plan and looked at the patterns that had happened, we've decided that it is probably going to be K through Eight primarily with those additional classrooms.
Selectman Goldstein.
I want to ask about the $3 million for the old Lincoln School. First, confirm my assumption, and what I think is my knowledge there too, that that's not for a permanent solution to the old Lincoln School. That's basically interim measures to get us through to whatever the long-term solution.
That's correct, that's our current thinking, that's correct.
And what, what does $3 million get us, is the question?
It primarily gets all the bathrooms renovated, which is a significant piece, as well as other systems, including electrical upgrade, including most of the electrical work, and a lot of the heating system as well. There'd be some, if you will, cosmetic work on surfaces, be they floors or walls or other painting work. But it's really fundamentally to work on the systems of the building, and I think some exterior, but it's primarily interior work. There's some windows, for instance, that need replacement, those kinds of things as well.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Rowe while we have his?
No, but I.
Okay. Other different questions about the capital?
I want to talk about Fisher Hill Park.
By all means. Ms. Gallantine.
I want to get an understanding of what the advisory committee's proviso there was about, about the gatehouse. Is the gatehouse a separate line item such that we could avoid spending money on the gatehouse until the president? I mean, wouldn't it conceivably hold up the whole project?
I can, I can answer in terms of the funding that we currently have put in place for the gatehouse with the existing 3.8 that's available right now, and the request from the Park and Recreation Commission for the 1.2, and the grant funding that we've been able to secure. There's $300,000 right now for the gatehouse. We also have budget numbers for full restoration, and that is one of the top priorities associated with the private fundraising effort.
So if that language were to be attached to the appropriation, we, there's 300, there's a line item, there's $300,000.
It's $300,000 right now in our, in our budget, yes.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hold up the rest of the project conceivably?
I'm a little confused with the language, but I don't.
I think, I think we need work on the language. I don't, I don't think it would, no.
The answer's no, but there was actually language. Remember the first, the first round of language that the advisory committee debated? Would have actually held up the entire project, and they didn't go along with that. So they used this language instead. So the rest of the project could definitely go forward.
I guess I have a different question for Ms. Gallantine then because I know part of the controversy over the gatehouse is that it should have been provided protection in the same way as the land was with a conservation easement, and there has not ever been a preservation easement provided for the gatehouse, and I'd like to know why.
We actually put language together in 2010 that was part of.
Language was voted for there to be a preservation easement. What I want to know is why there is not a preservation easement?
I'm actually answering that question, Madam Chairman.
No, you're not, you're telling me about language.
Language was put into the, the document with, for the purchase and sale of the property that included a conservation restriction and a preservation restriction. We submitted that to the state. The state asked us to remove the preservation restriction and do that separately. So there has been language. We've been working with preservation. It frankly makes sense to understand both the design and what's happening around the gatehouse itself. But there's, there's, there will be a preservation restriction on the property, and there's language underway that we're working on.
And who has submitted, where is it now? Where is this preservation restriction language?
Greer has a copy of it. I have a copy of it.
That's not where it should be submitted, is it? Having a copy of it in the preservation office is not submitting it, is it?
We have draft, there is draft language.
Since 2010?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Let me just say, I think, I think one of the issues is that the, the gatehouse, in the process of acquiring this property from the state, was, the importance of preserving the gatehouse was a focus of the acquisition. And the concept of a preservation restriction being part of the package was part of our acquisition from the state.
That's true, but I just want to be clear, that was also part of what.
It was part of the land disposition agreement, correct?
But that's part, that's what we submitted. But that's part, that's what we submitted.
Do not interrupt me. Is it, or is it not part of the land disposition agreement? I want her to hear me first. Is it, or is it not part of the land disposition agreement?
With the Commonwealth? It was not one of, it was not required by the state. It was not required...
Was it, or was it not in the language of the land disposition agreement? Just answer that question.
It was part of the town's, yes.
Thank you.
And I, what I'm trying to say is, we put it there. We want it there. The Parks and Open Space Division wants it there. The Park and Recreation Commission wants it there. The Preservation Commission wants it there. And what I'm hearing is an accusatorial tone...
After three years, it's not there. We want to know why. There is a conservation restriction. Somehow, that got done, and the preservation restriction did not. Why after three years has that not been done?
That was part of the purchase and sale. That was part of the purchase and sale for the state.
The, just to tone this down a little bit, the preservation restriction is not in place at this time.
That's correct.
And I think, I think the issue, from my perspective, is that the preservation restriction should be in place before work gets done around the gatehouse. So that you're not putting a preservation restriction in place once the character of the sighting of the gatehouse has been changed. And I think people agree on that.
Yes.
And I think the issue is just getting it done. And I, and I would hope that it gets done so that it doesn't hold up the project.
Agreed. And everyone agrees with that.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's pretty close to being done. It's really just a formality.
You know, I don't know what the status of it is, Ken, but I, I mean, I think people understand the principle that, you know, you can't, you can't put a preservation restriction in place once all of the changes have been done around the gatehouse. And that's why it's, I think, incumbent on all of us to get that done sooner rather than later. And then the project...
Agreed. And I can, I can tell you that Park and Rec is looking to have a committee formed with preservation commissioners and Park and Rec commissioners to work collaboratively on that. That would also include reuse discussion and prioritization of the, of the preservation and restoration effort. So we're already doing that, and I'm looking at drafts submitted from preservation. So all I can say is it's underway.
Can I move us to a different area? The Brookline Reservoir Park, which you're gonna be doing some work on, and not for a couple of years, but I just was, I was surprised to see it said comfort station in there. Is that, where would that go? That's restrooms, right?
I don't have that.
I'm reading on item 38 in the descriptions.
Okay, so for Brookline Reservoir Park, um... Okay, so there's been some discussion, there's been requests for a comfort station and for us to include that discussion in the master planning process. So whether or not there would be something that would be cited there, or whether there was a reuse option with the current Sportsman Club gatehouse, would be something that would be discussed at that time. But that is a request that we receive frequently from users of the Brookline Reservoir. Okay?
Erin, could we get just a quick update on the current scope of the project and the enhancements to it, and what we're getting for the additional funding that's been requested?
Okay. So I'll talk, big picture, Fisher Hill Reservoir Park is a 10-acre site. We purchased it from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was a former MWRA property, and it's really like this big granite and concrete bathtub that sits on top of Fisher Hill. We are creating a parking, series of walking paths. There is the incredibly handsome historic gatehouse designed by Arthur Vannell that we are looking to have as sort of the central feature and focus point as you enter the park. So the main entrance and the stairway that goes up to the top of the berm will lead up to that gatehouse. We're gonna have an athletic playing field that is within the basin of the reservoir itself. We're bringing the bottom up about four feet.
Do you have to remove the concrete and granite to get drainage and stuff?
All, at the bottom itself, yes. We'll be puncturing holes and then building a very significant drainage layer. And then an incredible amount of stormwater management on-site. And you were mentioning earlier the water release on Fisher, Fisher Hill, and so water management is something we've really been focusing on since, since the beginning. And...
Would you be able to, if the water table's very high up there, reuse some of that water for irrigation?
We have looked into that. There's, you know, we may be able to do some of that. That involves some additional cost in terms of storing that water to repurpose it, but it's certainly something we've frankly been looking at, big picture, about sustainability initiatives townwide and how we could repurpose water. So something we're looking at. So we have woodlands, walking trails, play that is sort of scattered throughout, overlooks, picnic, picnic area, meadow, wetlands, bioswales. And so, big picture, that's what the project is. The increase, the 1.2 million that is part of the Park and Rec Commission's budget request helps with improved materials for the walking paths, for the promenade. It includes additional plantings because we're gonna have to really replant the entire 10-acre site. It incorporates additional seating. It incorporates a water rail, water feature at the top of the promenade, and some additional drainage, and then work towards the gatehouse, and also a separate comfort station.
The, the project, as I understood it, as I understand it, could be done without this additional money. There could be a functioning park there. What this does is to upgrade materials and plantings. For example, there'd be a promenade at the top. It would be granite pavers as opposed to concrete. There would be a water feature running down the promenade. Otherwise, there wouldn't be that. Though, I think you could even tuck that into the base budget because there's a little bit of a margin there. But there'd also be additional plantings around. But, I mean, you could have the athletic field, you could have the concrete promenade. We could have, I think, additional decorative gates are included in this, if I'm not missing. Nope, that's stage three, that's the fundraising. Okay.
Oh, the, I'm sorry. The ornamental historic fence at the front of the park is included in this level one. So what I would call...
In the stage two, in the 1.25.
Exactly. The 1.2, and what I guess Park and Rec is calling their preferred alternative.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. So, so it is, I mean, it's, it will create a better park. It is probably not necessary. I mean, at your direction, the consultant did a design within the original budget, and then a design that was the preferred design of the committee, and then even some further amenities beyond that. And that's the issue that's posed.
Go on record as saying that this is, it's not every day that we christen a new park in Brookline, and, you know, this is our, our generation, our times, opportunity to leave their mark on the town in a very permanent sense. And another $1.2 million compared to the size of our CIP budget in general seems to me a small additional price to make this what I think it deserves to be. So, speaking only for myself, of course.
Okay. I think probably we have exhausted information on this particular topic. Thank you, Ms. Gallantine. It's 10 o'clock. Unless there is something that has not been discussed or something that is of significance, I do not really want to spend any more time on CIP. We've got warrant articles to do.
Well, hang on a second. I have more questions. Let me go through and find out what your significance is.
Why don't you see how you can get your answers without taking up Selectman's meeting time?
This is a major amount of money worth spending.
I understand, and I'm asking you to prioritize, if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, I have one question for the building commissioner, and then I think I can leave it at that. Mr. Bennett?
I see there's some work proposed on the devotion house, and I have been very concerned about just this issue, that the building was kind of unstable. And I know when you go to visit there, they tell you you can't go upstairs or anything because of the fact that it was sort of listing. But I am particularly concerned about that building now, which is, I think, our oldest building in town because of the proposed major construction that's gonna go on behind it. And is, are you confident that what is proposed here is going to render it in good enough shape to withstand the vibration, et cetera, of a lot of construction going on right nearby?
At this point, the work that we intend to do focuses around the chimney area in the center of the house, and...
It says something in here about inadequate support in the basement.
Right. So what happens is, the first floor and second floor are all supported around the main chimney in the center of the house. And some of the supports that were under today's construction would be larger and brought down, carried to the foundation unnecessarily that way in this house. We've done some minor exploratory work and found that there are two-by-threes or some two-by-fours. So with these funds here, we'll be able to go in and stabilize that situation. We have done some work in the past in the basement, stabilized and strengthened some of the first-floor structure. So we're hoping that, yes, at this point, that will be sufficient enough to carry us through the construction. And I think part of that whole construction process, there's gonna be special care and special provisions for protection of that, that structure.
Okay. And you're gonna do the window sills or the windows?
That's part of the, part of the funds. Whether we do that before or after the construction remains to be seen. We'll work with the preservation and staff to see when they want the full-blown work done. There are some of the windows, I think five or six or so, you can kind of see through and see some daylight. So those, we want to address sooner than later to stop any water penetration and make it weather tight. To get in and replace all 31 windows will be a larger endeavor, and we'll do that down the road.
Okay.
Okay, I will call people privately to ask their questions.
Sorry about that. I do think, though, we need to have these warrant articles for which there are petitioners present. First one is article number 13 regarding news rack regulations. And we are now in a, sort of a trial period implementing the amendment to the town bylaws requiring public hearings by the Board of Selectmen's on warrant articles for town meeting. And so tonight, we're gonna sort of test drive how this works. If there are very few people present, it will go quickly and smoothly. And if there are quite a lot of people present, we'll have to figure out how do we do it in a good way that's both expeditious and fair. But in order to go forward, we first need to hear from the petitioners. Selectman Benka, are you speaking, or...
I think Ms. Stringham will start.
Then Ms. Stringham, please come forward. You have up to 10 minutes to tell us about your warrant article and what you would like to accomplish by it.
And we will, we will split the time.
Yes. You may definitely share the time.
The fun part comes first.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Jean Stringham. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Three, and I'm also the chair of the Coolidge Corner South Side Neighborhood Association. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm going to give an overview of the warrant article, and then Dick Benka will give some of the specifics of what it says. So first of all, I want to thank, I think he left, oh, no, he's in the back, Commissioner Papa Sturgeon and his staff, and also Town Council for helping us with some of the language of this. Basically, this is a revision of a current bylaw about news racks. And the background is, last April, a year ago, the Coolidge Corner South Side Neighborhood Association called its annual meeting and invited the EDAB, Economic Development Advisory Board, to come as our guest. Paul Seena was there, and...
Actually, I think, have a letter from them in support, but continue.
Oh, great. Yes. I saw that today from Cara Bruton. So they were our guests. Cara Bruton was there. And the topic of the conversation was, what did we like about Coolidge Corner, and what did we want to see improved? There was a long list of both. We love Coolidge Corner, but there are things that needed to be improved, one of which being the newsboxes. There's newspapers, there's, you know, apartment information. And they seem to be proliferating. And what was worse than the proliferation was the state, that they had graffiti all over them, some had litter, used coffee cups. It just was getting, seemed to be getting worse, and we didn't understand why. So as a result of that meeting, we started looking into it. And I teamed up with Dick Benka, who was also apparently interested in the same subject. That's where that came from. But the EDAB had written last year their five-year plan, and newsboxes was actually in their five-year plan. And they referred back to the Brookline Comprehensive Plan several years ago, which also specifically said, draft a new bylaw to make the newsbox situation better. So we weren't just making this up out of the blue. There was other stuff going on, that, there was a history to it. So, hang on, let me just see my notes here. So, you know, I feel funny saying this because as we've been talking about millions and millions of dollars, and debt, and CIP, and all kinds of things. I used to be on the advisory board, so I have the advisory committee, so I know the vast nature of this. These newsboxes bring in $6,000 a year. And yet, the irritation that they bring in far surpasses that amount of money. I've noticed that the number went down from last spring, last summer, and last fall to now, the number of boxes that are actually on the street. And things have actually improved recent months. And I want to thank the commissioner's staff, Mark Mansfield, for their increased attention to the newsboxes. The biggest thing being is a new orange sticker, maybe a three-inch square sticker, which prominently says 2013 on it, so that the inspectors can now look at the boxes and see if they are inspected, and there's a little number on them, and people can go to the brook online and complain about the graffiti or whatever, broken doors, whatever. And I think that's really made a difference. I can see the difference in three months. So, so those are all good news. Let me just see if there's anything else I wanted to add before I asked Dick Benka to go over some of the language for you. I think that may be it. So Dick, would you be willing to hit on some of the language that makes the improvement for us?
I, I actually thought we were gonna see slides, but maybe in the, in the interest of time, I think...
Sean?
Okay. No problem. Okay, no problem.
I have them here in my pocket.
Okay, okay. Town meeting, town meeting, we'll see them. As you all know, Jean can be a very persistent and persuasive person. And the issue of news boxes has been on my to-do list for a long time. One of the first calls that I got after I was first elected was, why can't we do something about newspaper boxes? And that was from a citizen who lives in Coolidge Corner, not Jean. Bob Kramer, former planning board member, has been tweaking me over the years about this issue. And obviously, a lot of other issues and major tasks came up along the way. But then Jean put together a photo montage that we will all see at some point, and it became clear that it was really time to do something about this. And what became obvious in discussing this with Andy Papa Sturgeon with the DPW was that what we really had was an unwieldy enforcement mechanism that's in place now. We have one permit inspector in town who, in addition to responsibility for news boxes, also has responsibility for the town's DigSafe markings, for permitting utilities and others working on public streets, for arranging the staging and the scheduling of that work, and for monitoring and inspecting that work, and the repairs to the town streets. So this is just one small part of that individual's task. And it became very obvious that the existing bylaw was set up, really, almost in a way that it looks like it's designed to frustrate enforcement. So let me identify some of the issues. Under the current bylaw in Brookline, a news rack owner can put out a rack for 14 days without applying for a permit. If an inspector sees a box without a permit, he won't know how long it's been out, so he has to go back 14 days later and check it. Then it gets cited for a violation, then the inspector has to wait another 10 business days, then the inspector has to issue another notice, and then the inspector can start removal proceedings, which require another 30 days before the news box, which was unpermitted from the beginning, can be removed. This article changes the bylaw, and in conformity with various other communities, including Boston, Medford, Revere, Somerville, and Salem, it requires a permit before a news rack can be put out on the street. The article also addresses the issuance and renewal of news rack permits in four other ways. It addresses the fact that some owners haven't bothered to renew in a timely fashion. If a news rack doesn't have a timely permit, it can be removed. And as Jean said, we've already switched to a larger, more visible, color-coded permit like your auto inspections stickers that will enable that enforcement to go forward more expeditiously. The DPW commissioner made that change administratively. Second, news racks will not be given a permit if they're not in good condition. The inspector will affix the permit and will not affix it to a news rack that is in disrepair. Those news racks will be removed. So in effect, what this is designed to do is to ensure that owners will bring their news racks up to standards, at least at the beginning of the year, on an annual basis. Third, all outstanding fines and fees must be paid before renewal of a permit. And finally, the permits will run from January 1 to December 31, rather than for one year from the time of issuance, which means that the inspector won't have to deal with staggered renewal times. There is a change in standards or an articulation of standards. Our current bylaw just says that news racks must be maintained in good repair and clean and safe condition. The proposed amendment better qualifies this, articulating standards of repair and condition, as do Medford, Somerville, and Boston. As I indicated, there's a 30-day removal period now. That is eliminated. Under the current bylaw, when there's a violation, say a news rack covered in graffiti, the news rack owner is given 10 business days to fix it, then another notice and another 30 days before the news rack can be removed. This changes that to a single 14-day period, which is frankly more than other communities. Medford, Somerville, Salem, Boston, and Revere, they give three to 10 days to fix a problem before removal. But we settled on the 14-day period to conform to Brookline's graffiti bylaw so that the news racks weren't treated more harshly or more leniently than other private property. We also conformed to the graffiti bylaw by making clear that you have to remove graffiti, and you can't spray over it with black paint, which seems to be the solution de jour of news rack owners in town. The bylaw does permit some flexibility in allowing opaque portions of news racks to be sprayed over with a matching color, but you can't just spray black paint over graffiti and call that removal. And finally, we brought the bylaw into the 21st century by requiring owners to provide email addresses and allowing notices to be sent by email. I would note that EDAB actually suggested that we go further with this. You know, if you want, I could talk about some of their suggestions, but in the interest of time, I won't. I think that this is a good first step to rationalize the enforcement mechanism, and we can see whether it's effective, and if it's necessary to do more, we can do more down the road.
Okay, questions? Selectman Daley.
Yeah, well, I'm supportive of your efforts, but I wonder, the late Barbara Soifer, who was concerned about the boxes in Washington Square, at one point showed me, she'd done some research on this, and she showed me a larger thing that you would require everybody to put their magazines or...
One sort of consolidated rack thing.
Which was considerably more attractive than this array of the little boxes all over the place. So I wonder if you guys thought about that.
Right, okay, excellent point. So we call them the Black Multi-boxes. I don't know, maybe people made that name up. And if I remember correctly, 10 or so years ago, the town put them in thinking they would take the place of the plastic boxes. And what we found over time, just walking by them, that they were not really being used. The feedback was that the different companies wanted their own color branding. So somebody has a blue box, the parent paper, somebody else is orange, somebody else is yellow, white, et cetera. They were not using the black boxes, the multi-boxes. So in Washington Square, where Barbara lived, they had the world's biggest multi-box. It was huge, way bigger than the two in Coolidge Corner. And thanks to some advocacy on our part, the DPW recently took the one in Washington Square away and took the two big ones in Coolidge Corner away, thereby allowing pedestrians to walk more freely along the sidewalk and not bump into them. And, you know, it's one less place for clutter to join. So does that answer your question, Nancy?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
The big black boxes that the town put in basically were solid, and there was a door, you know, a door for each. Any publication would have an identical door. There is something that you, I think, I thought were alluding to, known as news rack condos, which are basically grids that you can, that the parents' paper could slide their pink box into. They are pink, I think, aren't they? And, you know, the various publications could slide their boxes into and still have their color and shape, to the extent that they have a distinctive shape visible. That actually was one of EDAB's suggestions, that that might be an alternative down the road if this doesn't address the issue of disrepair and derelict boxes in the town. See, I believe Vancouver has those, San Francisco has those. That is one of the alternatives that we might look at down the road. What was clear is that the publishers did not like just the big black box that had no distinctive marking for the various publications.
Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. So these news boxes, I believe, evoke a First Amendment issue, a constitutional issue, freedom of press. And so I got a two-part question. The first is, do we know that what we're proposing here will meet constitutional standards? Is there a test case similar to this, or what do we educate me?
No, these regulations are really designed to address the maintenance and care of news boxes, and basically to say that, yes, you can put news boxes out, but you have to maintain them, rather than to prohibit news boxes or to distinguish between, for example, the Globe and the Herald and the TAB, and on the one hand, you know, the steam publications in town, and on the other hand, you know, the free apartment papers that people...
Yeah, I'm going to come to that one in a second.
Aren't crazy about.
Yeah, I'll come to that one in a second. But, you know, I worry, maybe not worry, worry is too strong a word. I like to be aware if there's a constitutional standard, for example, you know, that we're not allowed to, well, let's give you a hypothetical. If there was some, you know, publication that people thought of as sort of radical and they, and what we would think of as an unattractive box as part of their mission statement, I mean, at what point can we draw the line?
I don't know. We're not, I mean, we're not there. This is certainly content neutral.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'd add two other things. Number one, these regulations that are being proposed are in place in other Massachusetts communities. And number two, there was a decision of the First Circuit Court of Appeals that actually allowed in, and there may be more than one decision out there, but there was a decision in the Beacon Hill Architectural District that allowed a total ban on quote-unquote "street furniture," which included news racks. So I personally think, Town Council believes that we're well within constitutional limits with this. Obviously, we'll hear from the Attorney General's office after we pass this, if Town Meeting does, and I hope that it does. But it's, you know, particularly because, for example, one of the alternatives that EDAB suggested is, why don't you just raise the permitting fee so that it becomes prohibitively expensive?
Yeah, $6,000 apiece.
Yeah, and that's not the tack that we're taking. The tack that we're taking is to say, look, you can put the news boxes out there, you need a permit, the permit fee is not exorbitant, we're not changing that as part of this, but you have to take care of the news boxes, that you have a public responsibility, the way that any owner of private property does under our graffiti bylaw, for example.
I'd like to follow up, though, on the issue of the permit fee. I noticed that you did not increase the fine for noncompliance, which must be very old.
Yeah, no, we didn't.
If you were thinking about something to give an incentive for compliance, you might have wanted to change that.
Right. No, we did not. The commissioner will be proposing a removal and storage fee to this board for the cost of removing boxes that are not in compliance and storing them. The fees are designed to be equivalent to the cost of performing the service.
My second question is, you touched on it a second ago, apartment rentals, et cetera. You know, commercial speech is not as highly protected as political speech. And I'll give you an anecdote. I had a business owner in town who was frustrated with our sandwich sign prohibition, you know, our sidewalk, sandwich sign prohibition, saying, well, if you're not going to let me have a sandwich board, you know, I could just as easily put a newsstand out in front and, you know, put advertisements for my business in there and, you know, block the sidewalk even more than I would block the sidewalk with a sandwich board.
I think there are physical restrictions on the boxes. They can't block the public way.
Oh, no, I mean, I understand that, but...
Yeah, I just want to be clear, blocking the public way is not permitted.
Well, there's a reasonableness to how much is blocking. I mean, it's always going to be blocking to some extent, and, you know, it's a public, it's always going to be on public property.
No, I think I'm using the standards that we use for outdoor seating and things, where you have to keep a clear passage.
It's always going to be on someplace where somebody might otherwise walk. But the question is, you know, any thought given to putting some higher standard or restriction when it's purely commercial speech involved?
No. As I said, this, I think some people would like to do it. I mean, there were certainly some suggestions that we do that, but this does not do that. This is content neutral. And certainly, within the scope of the warrant, we couldn't go further now.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this proposed bylaw amendment, warrant article? Seeing and hearing none. That will, we now must take a vote to close the public hearing on warrant article number, whatever it was, 13, right? All in favor of closing the public hearing on warrant article number 13? Please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much for your information, and we're not voting on this tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, next warrant article is number 22. And it's the study transit signal prioritization along Beacon Street. Mr. Dempsey? I believe you are the petitioners. Sorry, Mr. Sanders, sorry. I'm reading Sanders and Dempsey here, so...
Correct. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike Sanders. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10. So I'll just start by explaining...
Tell us why.
Perfect. So you probably already know why. When you're riding the green line on Beacon Street and it's packed, there are hundreds of people on your train at rush hour. And then all of a sudden, the train is given a red light and you stop on some side street, and two cars turn left in front of the train. So two people, maybe four or five people max, delay hundreds of people on the green line train. So what this resolution does is tries to further what the town has already begun. We have, I have been working with Todd, and he provided me correspondence dating back to 2007. And there was evidence of correspondence that he couldn't find, but that would date back to 2005, where the town has been trying to implement this exact thing, transit signal prioritization on Beacon Street. Currently, the situation is detailed in a 2007 Boston Globe article, details that pedestrians, bikes, and cars all are detected when they approach an intersection on the newly reconstructed Beacon Street. But trolleys are not currently detected. And so it's the town's equipment that processes and controls the signal cycles, and the town owns the equipment. And so what this article does is, we understand it's way too late to implement fiscal year 2014. So what this resolution does is ask for a study of the equipment and procedures necessary for the town to implement transit signal priority. The study would take place in fiscal 2015. And then if there were acceptable recommendations out of that study, that would be a different thing. be a different thing. Uh, any questions?
I actually think maybe my question is for Mr. Ditto. So, would this be requiring, um, equipment that we just totally is not in place at the current time? Is that, is that right?
I think it would be in addition to what we have now.
So, do you have any idea of, give me a rough idea of what kind of expense we'd be talking about?
I, I don't. I really don't have a clue.
Can, can I just ask for clarification on your question? The cost of the equipment or the study that's being asked?
Well, I guess both.
Yeah, I, I don't have a feel for either one, um, what, what's involved. I know that when, um, we had talked to the T several years ago, they, they were kind of reluctant to, to move forward with the study, and at that point in time, I think they take-
The T was? The MBTA was?
Yeah, yeah.
Why was that?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know if their hearts were in it, or, or-
Well, there are new people in charge now.
Exactly. I think that's the difference between five, six years ago than now.
Maybe they thought we were gonna ask them to pay for it.
Yeah. But they do have a, a pilot program. I don't know if it's in place yet, but it's on the, um, the, um-
E-line.
E-line and the B-line. Those are the Commonwealth Ave and South Huntington. So, it might, uh, might be interesting to see how effective those are, and, you know, what the costs were involved with that.
Would, would this require the sort of study that we are obliged to do every time we change a traffic signal?
There would certainly be a coordination effort there that we would have to undertake if we were changing our signals.
So, they're, they're asking for sufficient funds in fiscal year 2015, uh, to commission a professional engineering study of the cost and benefits of upgrading these signals, controllers, associated equipment to allow for prioritization of the MBTA. So, you, you cannot tell us, uh, even a ballpark as to how much that study might cost?
No, we really, we don't have any experience in this, this field, and we haven't had any studies to look at.
Yeah.
Selectmen Goldstein?
Do, do either of you know, this, this sounds like the kind of thing that grants might be available for. Is there any, any knowledge that that's the case, or, or, uh, history in other communities?
I, I guess the, um, probably the next step on, on our end would be to touch base with Boston and find out, you know, how'd you go about this? What costs are involved, both study-wise and for, you know, mechanics for, for the new equipment?
It would be really, really useful before we vote this warrant article to have some kind of cost estimate.
Yeah, I, I might pro-
Of the study.
I might propose an amendment requesting that you explore grant possibilities for it, too. It seems like the kind of thing that even the federal government might have money for us for this kind of thing.
Under sequestration?
Yeah.
You're not talking about applying from now?
No, no, I'm not talking, but I think it's-
Just would, do, do they exist?
When this comes back to, to, if, assuming that, that this warrant article passes, when it comes back for fiscal year 2015 budget, it would, at that point, there should, there should be information on availability of grants as well.
Yeah, Selectmen Benka, sorry.
So, I, I actually have some thoughts, suggestions, questions about this. Um, I do understand that the MBTA is looking at this on Commonwealth Ave. I didn't realize, on the B-line, I didn't realize it also was on the E-line. Um, I'm wondering, uh, why we don't wait to see how that comes out, whether that works, why the MBTA doesn't fund this. It really is, um, uh, the MBTA, there, I, I believe that they're doing this pilot project on Commonwealth. Is that correct, as far as you guys understand?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Mr. Sanders? Really? Okay.
Could, 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 uh, somebody check on that for us?
Yeah, and, and it, okay. So, that's, that's another question.
I, I mean, I think Selectmen Benka's hit the nail on the head, though. If they're going to do a study and say, okay, this is the kind of equipment that's needed, w, w, why should we fund a study to, to, to come up with the same conclusion? I mean-
Well, possibly a different conclusion.
Yeah. But, I mean, I, I think somebody needs to get some more information about what's going on already, and perhaps then the answers will be clear to us from the other study. And then we wouldn't need to spend, uh, money independently to, to study this, I think, is the-
So, the study would have, there are two components to transit signal prioritization, the equipment and the effect on the surrounding streets. So, that you could definitely gather, it seems like you could gather the equipment portion from experience in other locations, but there are, uh, sort of Brookline-specific, Beacon Street-specific things that would have to be figured out in relationship to that geography.
Okay, so maybe we could, uh, suggest an amendment to this that would, um-
Well, let me, yeah, I mean, your, your, um, explanation, um, talks about detection equipment. Um, that obviously would require a change on the MBTA's right-of-way. Uh- No?
I'll respond to that. So, there are video detection systems and other means of detecting trolleys without-
Okay.
-entering the, the right-of-way.
Let's, let's think, though, about, uh, the Beacon Street trolley. Uh, and let's think about the trolley pulling up to the stop in Coolidge Corner or St. Paul. Um, that, it's not a matter of detecting it, because that trolley pulls up to the stop, let's say it's an outbound trolley, and it's on, it stops on the Boston side of the intersection. And it's not ready to go until it's loaded and unloaded. So, it's gonna require some, um, signal from the operator of that trolley. It's not a matter of detecting whether there's a trolley there. The trolley pulls up, and if the light changes, that trolley could still be loading and unloading, and that loading or unloading process may take thirty seconds, it may take two minutes, it may take three minutes, depending on the time of day and how crowded. And it's only when that trolley is ready to go that you'd want some sort of prioritization. So, I think-
Well, even, I mean, I'm not sure Beacon, uh, the, the, the Beacon and Harvard is the best example, 'cause I'm not sure at that major intersection, that, I, I can see at smaller intersections, you know?
He was talking about the left turn, really, the turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but every, I mean, I'm thinking, the majority-
But I'm not sure a major intersection where you've got-
I'm thinking about the stops. Many of the stops are before the intersection, and merely detecting by video, or, or electric eye, or whatever, that there's a trolley there, doesn't solve the problem. I think this would require some, to, to be workable, this would require some change, and perhaps a significant change, in both the operating procedures and the equipment of the MBTA. And I'm wondering whether we just, I mean, the, the idea of doing this independently of the MBTA and, and, uh, and outside of, we don't know what their capital project budget is. It, it just seems to, um, maybe get ahead of the MBTA process.
So, there are near-side stops and there are far-side stops-
Yeah.
-at each intersection, or, depending on which intersection it is. And so, transit signal priority works better for, as you pointed out, far-side stops where the, the station is after the intersection. Um, so that's something that this study will pick up on, is what, what, like, for example, Beacon and Harvard, not a good place for this to be implemented. But maybe, I mean, I'm not gonna name specific streets, but there are ones where there are far-side stops, and it is a, uh, might, the study might find that it is a good-
I mean, I don't, I don't think this is a bad idea. I, you know, I mean, I think that, that the idea, that the concept is a good one. Um, I'm just curious as to the idea of having the town fund it, um, kind of going off on its own without seeing what the MBTA does, where it's actually doing this as a pilot, and without coordinating this with the MBTA. And I, let me just add one other question that I, I would love to have answered. And that is, um, let's assume, and I would hope that you would improve travel times by twenty percent, um, would the MBTA turn those trains around at, at the end and send those trains back, or would it hold them? I mean, would we get more runs with this system, or would we just get the same number of runs and more cars backed up at the reservoir stop waiting to make their runs back? I'd love to have the MBTA answer that question. I'd love to see what the MBTA contracts provide, because the, you know, the, the end game here would be to have the runs more, go more quickly, and have the trains heading on their way back, so that you actually get more runs out of the same number of cars, under, out of the same equipment. If the MBTA is not willing to do that, you really haven't gained much by this, other than getting some people home sooner, but you haven't reduced that overcrowding by increasing the usage of the cars.
So, one thing that, um, transit signal prioritization does is it, uh, it really helps to eliminate delays in the system, bunching. Um, for example, I'll, I'll use an example that's a little more noticeable. On the sixty-six bus, you'll notice that oftentimes there's one bus right next to the other, and that's because-
I've seen three.
Exactly. So, that doesn't really happen as noticeably on the green line, but it does. When, when the, it, the bunching happens, the front car gets delayed, and then the car, the trolley approaching from, from behind starts catching up to it. So, what this will do is it'll make the runs more reliable and eliminate the delays faced by the first car.
Okay, so I, I have a prag, practical question comment, and that is, it may be that we would all agree that this is a wonderful thought, and we would all benefit from being able to do it. But I certainly would like to see, and maybe you work with Mr. Ditto, to come up with something that would scope out what this engineering study might be. It could be you get this information by having some conversations with Boston about whatever it is they're doing. Uh, but I, I think before we enthusiastically say, oh, yeah, let, let's go ahead and do it, and find out it's gonna cost us half a million bucks, I, I, we need to have a better, uh, handle on that kind of number.
Okay.
So, I think that would be really, really helpful. Uh, but clearly, you've raised a question. Having listened to the Commissioner tell us about how our LED lights can send us emails, I do believe there must be a way to improve this. But we need to understand a little better what the scope of the study should be, and some kind of cost estimate.
Well, if, if they're, if the MBTA is already looking at this Boston data and headed toward a, a specific set of, um, uh, equipment, that they might be interested in using, obviously, us spending a lot of money on a study and coming up with a different set of equipment that would be involved, um, that probably doesn't really make sense. So, I, I think, uh, I, I mean, I, I'm wondering if, if this should be more of, uh, let's gather information now, and find out what is going on in this area, and what the MBAT, MBTA and Boston are doing, and, you know, then come back and say, I'm looking for money. I mean, you're trying to get us to say, yes, we're gonna spend a lot of money on this, or some money on this.
It's not clear that it's a lot of money, half a million dollars.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think, um-
Well, how about getting a better idea of what the cost would be would make it easier to decide?
Just as a technical matter, uh, even if this passes, you can't bind town meeting next year.
No, I know, but, but still, I hate to say, yes, I'm gonna spend, I hate to, you know, vote for something, give my word, yes, I'm gonna vote for the study next year, when, um, ma- maybe I'm not, you know? So, what, what I wanna know is, and I'm not-
And you don't wanna vote for a blank check, either.
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to the idea of giving some prioritization to the T cars. I wanna make that clear. I'm not sure Coolidge Corner's the place, but, you know, at lesser intersections, I can see where it's, I can appreciate your idea. What I'm saying is that, you know, I think we really do need to find out what is already going on in this area, and if the, if the MBTA is funding this stuff in Boston, um, I, you know, then they ought to fund it in Brookline, too. Um, except, as you say, we would probably wanna do something to look at, you know, how that's gonna impact our traffic, that aspect of it, you know, then, then we might wanna spend a little money on it, but it would be a lot less money than if we were paying for the whole thing.
Okay, I think we should bring this to a close.
Interesting, useful idea, but I, I think some questions.
We'll see if anyone wants to speak on it.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to the proposal, the resolution under this warrant article number twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, uh, then we should, uh, I will move that we adjourn the public hearing on warrant article twenty-three. All in favor, please-
Twenty-two.
Sorry, twenty-two. All in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daly, Selectmen Benka-
Aye.
Selectmen Goldstein.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Uh, very interesting idea, needs a little more work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is article number twenty-three, resolution on tar sands. Ms. Oldham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, thank you for having me. Sorry I'm so late.
I don't think it's your fault.
We're sorry you're so-
We're sorry it's so late.
We're, we're sorry you're so late.
Yes, seldom do people apologize after we keep them waiting for hours.
No, she's saying she's sorry.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Everybody's sorry.
So, uh, I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at this. I'm Carol Oldham. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct Eleven. Um-
I heard they had a leak today.
They did. Yeah, yeah, it started on Sunday in Mayflower, Arkansas. So, um, so there are three, basically three major reasons that I just wanna go over quickly, and I swear to God I will make it quick, um, about why I'm opposed to tar, to tar sands. And the first reason is the mining and refining process. The second reason is the chance of spills during transportation, including in pipelines. And the third is the climate change impact from tar sands, which is known as the world's dirtiest oil. Um, so tar sands comes from a deposit in Alberta, Canada, and it's a thick, tarry oil that's suspended in a matrix of sand and, um, soil particles. And there are two ways to extract it, but one of the most common ones is to strip mine it. Um, and it takes about three to five times as much energy to get it out of the ground as conventional crude oil, which is one of the major reasons that it's significantly more climate polluting. Um, there are massive tailing ponds in the mining areas, um, and streams and rivers and communities near tar sands mining sites have elevated levels of carcinogens and toxins. Tar sands oil is different from regular oil. Um, it's, when it's taken out of the earth, it's thick, and it's the consistency of like peanut butter or asphalt, um, partially because of the sand that continues to be in it. And to be pushed through pipelines, it has to be thinned with diluents like, uh, benzene. And, um, it has to be heated in order to be more liquid to push it through, and it has to be pushed at a much higher pressure. So, all of that means that it behaves really differently in the pipeline. And, um, pipelines between two thousand and seven and two thousand and ten, pipes that carried tar sands spilled more than three times as much oil per mile of pipeline than pipelines carrying conventional crude. Um, the pipeline that Exxon and others would like to use for tar sands in New England runs from Portland, Maine to Montreal, Canada, and it runs through Maine, New Hampshire, and Vermont. It's more than sixty years old, and it runs across the Connecticut River, it runs along the Andruscoggin River, it runs next to Sebago Lake, which is the drinking water for Portland, Maine. It was built in places where we wouldn't build a pipeline now. Um, it's built under farms and in neighborhoods, in residential neighborhoods, as well as near state parks, and a lot of rivers and streams, and bogs, and, and all kinds of really special places. And the risk from, of spills from this pipeline, um, impacting special places in New England is massive and could be devastating. And as you mentioned, there was the Mayflower, Arkansas tar sand spill. Um, that pipeline was also sixty years old and was also repurposed. It was built for conventional oil and was repurposed for tar sands oil. Um, the subdivision where the break was, had been built after the pipeline, um, already existed and was buried under the ground, and a lot of people didn't even know that there was a pipeline there in their neighborhood. Um, and, um, all of that is really bad. But, uh, I think the major reason that Brookline should be opposed to tar sands is the climate impact. Um, tar sands oil was estimated by the EP- opposed to tar sands is the climate impact. Tar sands oil was estimated by the EPA recently to have 83% more climate pollution in the entire well-to-tank lifecycle. And as I mentioned before, just getting it out of the ground produces three to five times as much climate pollution as conventional crude. And it is estimated that the tar sands deposit in Canada represents more carbon than humanity has burned to date. So there's a lot of carbon in there. And Brookline has made major commitments and has really led the state and the region on climate change. We have a climate plan. We have the Selectmen's Climate Committee. We've passed a lot of warrant articles that have to do with our climate emissions and working to make our town as clean as possible. We're a proud, green community. And I believe that this resolution is a good way to stand up for our principles and to reject dirty fuels and dirty energy while moving our community towards a clean energy future.
Questions for Ms. Oldham. Selectman Daly.
This is more of a comment. I, back in January, when we had Climate Action Week, I attended a panel discussion over at the library of some climate change experts who all happened to live in Brookline. And each one of them-
Amazing panel, and they all live here.
I know, it was. Each one of them mentioned this as being particularly dangerous in, in the world of climate change, and something that should be stopped. So I'm on board.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Selectman Goldstein.
This is not fracking, right? This is, this is-
It's not. It's not fracking.
Tar sands.
So is, currently, what percentage of petroleum comes from tar sands?
In the Northeast, almost none. So we're actually relatively clean right now. I mean, it's less than 1%.
How about as, as a nation?
That's a really good question. There are portions, you know, like, there, so a lot of people think of Keystone when you think about tar sands, and there is a portion of that which already exists, which does take it into the Midwest. But I'm afraid I don't know. I can get you that information.
One, one more question. So I assume at some point, once they, they transport this goopy, sand-laden petroleum, they process it, and it becomes more of what we're used to in gasoline, in fossil fuels, and, you know, more usable, right?
Synthetic crude.
Would, what if they processed it before they put it in the pipe, though? I mean, would, what you're proposing, pricipped that?
I think some of, right, some of the concerns would be remediated. It doesn't take away the climate concern. And, and actually, the existing refineries, like, refineries that, that process regular, conventional crude cannot process tar sands because it's actually different enough. So that's one of the reasons there aren't actually refineries. Like, for instance, so the pipeline, you know, in, that, it can get as far as Montreal now, but there's no refinery that can deal with it in Montreal. So there's a refinery that they're proposing in Delaware City, Delaware. So, you know, it would probably have to go by ship from Portland, Maine down to Delaware, which means it's going past Cape Cod. So there are a lot of reasons that it's a really bad idea.
Sounds like you're on track here. Thank you.
I, I just have a, a question which I didn't fully understand. You say it would reverse the direction.
Yes. So-
Please explain. How do you reverse the direction?
Yes. So the pipeline was built 62 years ago to take oil that was coming in on ships into Portland-
From Portland at the port and going to Montreal.
And take it up to Montreal. Yeah. So it's actually, that pipeline is not running right now.
Right.
It's been emptied out there, looking for a client for it.
Got it. Okay.
And so they would, you know, they would have to do some, on, they want to build a pumping station on the Canadian side to get it into the United States.
Wasn't the pipeline built where gravity was doing the work? So, I mean-
Yeah, they would, which is why they would have to build another pumping. I mean, there are pumping stations along the way. I've seen one up in northern New Hampshire. You know, there are several along the way, but they would have to have another one because I guess there's a hill coming in from Canada. They would have to get it over.
Okay. All right. This is a public hearing on warrant article number 23. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this warrant article? Seeing and hearing none, I move that the Board of Selectmen adjourn the public hearing on warrant article 23. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Binka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then we have a couple of election warrants to approve. I believe they're pretty straightforward, if I can find mine. Oh, thanks. And I believe we merely have to vote to approve and execute the warrants for the April 30th, 2013 special state primary, and the warrant for the April 30th, 2013 annual town election. So moved. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Binka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And last item is to appoint member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Jonathan Book, as an alternate, who is an alternate, to become a full member, to fill the vacancy caused by the passing of the co-chair Enid Starr. So I will move-
May I just disclose, I will, I will vote on this, but I did want to disclose that Jonathan Book was a colleague of mine at Foley Hoag when I was practicing law, but that was more than seven, six or seven years ago.
Probably you do not have to recuse yourself on this.
No, I, I don't plan to recuse myself, and I will vote very happily for Jonathan, but I did want to make that disclosure.
Okay. Then I move that we appoint alternate Zoning Board of Appeals member Jonathan Book as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daly.
Aye.
Selectman Binka.
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And that concludes the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd. Next week, we'll be back on Tuesday nights.